Good afternoon and welcome to the April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four work session of the Mayor and City Council of Hagerstown. This meeting is now called to order. And first up, we have fiscal year twenty-five budget review. Michelle Hepburn, our Chief Financial Officer, and Brooke Garver, our Accounting and Budget Manager. Hello.
Yeah.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right, so this evening, what we thought we would do is come back and we had been reviewing a little bit the general fund. And we were looking at higher level, more summarized reporting. So we do still want to take just a few minutes if we could, stay in the general fund, but cover some of the information in the general fund section. If you have questions, that's fine, but it's more so that you have a feel for navigational purposes and an idea of where you can find more detailed information. Again, I like the high-level summary information that's out there because we can see within the first fifty pages, a really nice snapshot. But I know that there are times where people need to see the details and I want you to know where to get those. So with that, I'll try to break.
Okay, so we're going to start in section two on page one. The statement of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance, which is basically a two-page summary of this entire section. The columns across the top are FY twenty-three actual, which are audited ending numbers. FY twenty-four budget, FY twenty-four estimated actual, which is how we think we'll end the year. FY twenty-five proposed budget, and then the percent change on the last column compares FY twenty-five budget to FY twenty-four budget. So the top section is revenues, which has a corresponding page behind it for each line. But in FY twenty-five, we have six, a little over sixty-three million in proposed budget. The next section is expenditures by department, which again has detail in the pages behind it. Not quite the same as in revenue, it's sorted by function, so, but you can still get all the information there behind it. In page two, about a third of the way down, you'll see total expenditures and transfers for FY twenty-five. Again, a little over sixty-three million with a projected surplus of five thousand one hundred nine dollars. Then we move on to fund balance. We're projecting to start the year at twenty-two point five million. Use two point two million for CFP projects and then end with about twenty point three million.
And of this twenty point three million, I do want to take an opportunity just to stop and Brooke was probably going to mention it already, but a lot of time and attention is always here because our general fund, well, our fund balance reserve and retained earnings policy contains several funds. One of which is the general fund. The general fund seems to be the one that gets the most attention. So this is one of the areas, one of the few areas in the budget, there's several when you look at our act report. But one of the few places in the budget where you can see the fund balance for the general fund broken out, dollar amount for unassigned. Again, that's the one that the majority of the focus is typically spent because that's not already allocated elsewhere. Eighteen point nine million, and then if you look at the numbers at the bottom, we have a policy and our policy is seventeen that we will strive to maintain in this retained earnings seventeen percent of all of our total annual operating expenses and make sure that there's enough there that it covers two months' worth. So if we pay for all of our expenses and paid the same amount every single month, that we would have enough cash on hand in fund balance for two months. When you look at fiscal year twenty-five proposed budget, if we end the year where we think we're going to for fiscal year twenty-four and estimating how much we're going to have in open POs, meaning if we have something that we've already encumbered, it's no longer unrestricted or unassigned. We're going to have about thirty-three point six percent, which is more than our policy, in four months of that on hand. So again, exceeding the thresholds, still utilizing some of our prior general fund balance reserves and our surpluses we had accumulated there while at the same time replenishing. So that's all very good and a good, strong.
Thirty-three point six is net, percent is net of what is being allocated for this budget.
If everything goes exactly as planned, but again, that's a long time between now and then.
Right.
All right, so then the next two pages are just charts of the information on page one and two. Just kind of a different way to look at it for people who learn more visually. On page three, it compares FY twenty-five budget to FY twenty-four estimated actual revenues at the top, expenditures at the bottom.
And this is one of the few places in the budget that I, I don't want to say that I like more, but this is one of the few places where we're actually putting the twenty-five budget and comparing it to where we anticipate we're going to actually spend. So much of our time and effort and focus throughout the budget is budget year to budget year. So this is one sheet where we can kind of see side by side where we actually think we're going to end with where we're projecting and trending for the next year's budget.
And then finally on page four is just FY twenty-five expenditures, broken out by percentages overall at the top and then dollars at the bottom, so you can kind of see by category.
And this is one item that we added primarily because two, it was two council people at that time had found a really nice chart. They liked the visual and thought it would be great for the city of Hagerstown. They saw it elsewhere. Councilmember McIntyre and then councilmember Keller. And I will say that a lot of people really do like this. One of the things with the location of where it's at in the budget book, some people may say general government. Well, eight point one, that's great, we see the bubble, but what is general government? So as Brooke mentioned, if you flip back to page one, you're going to see a list of everything under expenditures by department that says total general governmental, eight point one. So of that eight point one in general governmental, a hundred and thirty-one thousand is council. Seventy-seven thousand is the mayor and so forth. So people, by putting it all together and close by, hopefully it's a, it's a nice visual so that they can see higher level. But then also that we can reference them to a point where they can actually see what makes up those numbers in that detail. All right, let's jump to, oh, page sixty-five. Let's stay in this section instead of jumping to the other section for a minute.
Okay, page sixty-five, we're just going to look at the bottom section under unallocated expenses, contributions to other agencies. This was previously approved and it pretty much actually does follow the agency contribution policy. But there are eight agencies that we contribute to annually. That's the Washington County Museum of Fine Arts, CRS, Hagerstown Municipal Band, HNDP, Maryland Symphony Orchestra, Maryland Theater, Washington County Free Library, and Washington County Historical Society. There's also ten thousand in unspecified agency contributions that can be used how you see fit. The last few years, that's gone to Heart of the War, Heart of Civil War Heritage Area.
So again, we were here in November as we're required to do annually. When we left with the policy, it was two hundred and five thousand. You can see here is the two hundred and five thousand. This is the way we're proposing to allocate to all those eight organizations, which is the exact same manner and dollar which we allocated for fiscal year twenty-four. So here's the time, if, I know when we speak about the policy, sometimes we say, well, Michelle, when do we tell you what to put for each organization? So we wanted to make sure that we were stopping in the review of this budget session to review this now.
Has the Heart of Civil War Heritage, have they presented to us, I feel like they have.
The last three years.
They haven't.
But have they this year?
Not yet.
Not yet.
I've always been in support of that, but would it be possible, would Holly Place fall under this category?
So Holly Place could, and at one time we did, I believe, do agency contributions under the general fund for them. But when we created the general fund agency contribution policy and narrowed it down to the eight agencies, one of the things we did at that time was we segregated and we said, okay. If there is an organization that was currently receiving on an annual basis money from our CDBG public services side that we weren't going to do our city portion of our federal dollars from CDBG plus our taxpayer dollars from the general fund to the same agency because we have such a large base of nonprofit agencies in the community and others at that time felt that it was hard, right, to justify to one agency out of two buckets of our money instead of having that open process.
Okay.
But yes, to me, they, the agency contribution, yes.
Did Holly Place, I know that the CDBG funds that they were to receive were lessened significantly in last year's budget.
In fiscal year twenty-four.
Fiscal year twenty-four. Was that, was that organization, did that organization receive the least? Do you remember? I know I'm asking a lot, I apologize.
No, no, from CDBG?
Yeah.
Okay, so what we can do is we can go with the flow. So they, CDBG is under the special revenue fund section, so that's section four in your budget book. So let's flip there because we can see the information there under CDBG. And so we're going to section four, page seven. And we will cover our CDBG, our Community Development Block Grant and the other special revenue funds. We'll cover them another evening, but again, this is a good, good opportunity for us to look. So halfway down the page, you see where it says public services and we got a little asterix. And if we look on the next page, it's just reminding us that the public services under HUD has a maximum cap that we have to apply annually. But what you can see here is you can see fiscal year twenty-three, excuse me, and you can see the agencies that we gave money to for a grant total of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. And then if we come over and look under fiscal year twenty-four estimated actual, two hundred, just shy of two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And we're going to go in the middle and find Senior Living Alternative Meals, which is Holly Place. So in fiscal year twenty-three, forty-two thousand, five hundred, and fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five thousand. Now, at the time that we do and prepare the fiscal year twenty-five budget, we didn't have our entitlement dollars for the current year finalized. We didn't, weren't in receipt of that. And then the other thing that happens is we put a placeholder, so for fiscal year twenty-five, we're anticipating a hundred and forty thousand. And then what Margie and her wonderful team within economic development will do is they have an application process, they have a committee. They do a selection and then they'll bring it back and tell you how that one hundred and forty thousand breakdown is going to look. But you can see they received twenty-five thousand. If you look up and down the list, it looks like commission on aging had slightly more, but that doesn't count, that was CARES dollars. And those CARES dollars were ones that the administration at that time gave, right? So that one's outside of the normal and then goodwill for forty-six thousand. So the only two that was receiving more were the last two recipients of the CARES funding, which is above and beyond our normal income. So.
If I'm not mistaken.
So they, looks like they got the most of, no, no, please.
If I'm not mistaken, we had a lot more, from looking at this, people awarded monies than previous years, which is why the funding was less for Holly Place.
Because of the CARES Act.
Because of the.
ARPA, like all of the, that was, not ARPA money, but it was because of COVID and that was the CARES Act stuff.
Round one and then.
So if everybody remembers, prior, prior to ARPA, when COVID first happened, there was CARES dollars, federal dollars that got pushed out. And it literally went to health departments. Some did go to counties. If you were an entitlement community, you did receive, most did receive some funding through CDBG, through CARES Act. And there was two rounds of it. And what we, what we did was our administration sat, there was recommendations and they helped pick through all the agencies that were eligible, that it's a very defined purpose, has to be utilized specifically to address the pandemic at that time. And that is the only dollars that are excluded from our public services cap. So what they did was they said, hey, these are still public services money, you can't use them in any other fashion, push them out, we won't count it towards your cap. We have two agencies left who have, did not yet spend it all, and so we were hoping that they have it all done by June thirtieth this year. So that is, so when you're looking at totals, it looks like it's going way up and way down. But if you take out the two that says CARES Act, it's, it's more level, more flatline.
Thank you for explaining that. Back to, you know, what we had originally, where it started. I, I see where and why we wouldn't add some, something like Holly Place in the contributions, so thank you.
Sure.
I will fight for Holly Place until.
Please.
I leave this seat. Put y'all out of order, Michelle, sorry.
No, you're fine. This is why we're here and that's why I bring the book, because these are good conversations and they're good questions. And one of the, one of the best things that we can do is help people navigate this document because it has so much information, but it's very intimidating and people don't know where to find it. So we're still looking at ways, how can we make it more user-friendly, right, so.
So what are the criteria for the other agencies in this page sixty-five, section two?
For the general fund agency contributions?
Yeah, what's the, what's the criteria that puts an agency on that list?
So the mayor and council group defined a policy and they identified eight core organizations which are listed. So the group identified in a policy those core organizations that were going to receive funding on an annual basis. And so what happens is, is every October, sometimes first week in November, we come and we sit, Brooke and myself, with the mayor and council and we asked two important questions. Here's the agency contribution policy. Are the eight organizations still good? Do you need more? Do you need less? And then the second question we ask at that time is total funding. So it's a little different, Councilmember Preney, because it, it doesn't say, hey, we're going to have a process, an open process every year. We're going to do applications, we're going to have a committee, we're going to, the body listed the organizations that they wanted to give to on an annual basis and a total funding amount that we were going to set aside. So we do that before the budget starts so that Brooke and I have some idea of what to do. So the first question we ask with policy is eight, and the second question we ask is two hundred and five thousand, is that still good? Or has it not?
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Sure. All right, if there's no other questions there, we're going to go to page sixty-six. And the reason that we wanted to take some time is because typically in the general fund, if we look at things, we look at individual pages, individual departments, revenue. We don't typically look at page sixty-five, which is considered unallocated expenses, meaning it's in no one specific department or area. And then the second one is we do a chart separate from the departments. So in section two, you will see community engagement department, you all see parks and recreation. The amount of detail you see there is more than you see for a department elsewhere. But what you will not see in those pages in section two, under community engagement and under parks and rec is a listing of where they're spending money on what we can easily define in our software system as an event. So we're going to stop in section two on page sixty-six. And this is a listing of where we're spending money on events. Now, if it's something that we haven't uniquely identified in our computer system, we aren't going to find it, when I say we, Brooke and I, when we're preparing this schedule. But for the most part, I think we've identified the majority and these are city, except for one line, city events. So things that our staff is running, not other city-sponsored events. Again, much like Brooke previously explained, we see fiscal year twenty-three actual. We've done a subtotal for public functions, which is now community engagement, separate from the events that their recreation division does. So in fiscal year twenty-three, we spent two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in events. In fiscal year twenty-four budget, we have two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. And I do want to just take a moment to stop because events were described as a priority in our city center plan. And one of the things that, at the time in that plan was the desire to expand our events. So when we look from fiscal year twenty-four budget at two ninety-seven and go to fiscal year twenty-five budget at three hundred and five thousand, we are increasing. You may say, Michelle, that's nothing. Well, in fiscal year twenty-four budget, we have about twenty thousand that is one-time grant monies that we do not have repeating in fiscal year twenty-five. The other thing that I would be very remiss if I did not say is that we have increased the number of events that we are having. And I think this group does an outstanding job of recognizing those events and mentioning them before they happen to help us get the word out. There is a line at the top, and I just got to find it because I've lost my place. It's about a third of the way, two-thirds of the way down, it says miscellaneous downtown events. In fiscal year twenty-five, we increased that budget from fiscal year twenty-four to fifty thousand. That is typically the line item that Brittany utilizes to give out to others that are hosting grants through her new policy and procedures that she's been at the table, I think twice in the last few months to talk about. So we increased it and it's there. The events, whether the city. The events, whether the city is hosting the event and putting the event on, or whether it's a city sponsored event, takes more effort than what is necessarily just reflected here. It takes a teamwork, it takes community engagement, it takes engineering for street closures. It takes public works, it takes police, it takes fire. So as we talk about the desire to grow our events, we need to decide if that is ones that the city is doing, or ones that are city sponsored. And then we gotta think about, I think January was literally the only month that we didn't have a city event. So, once we talk about events, to kind of have a little bit of perspective.
When is the baseball stadium going to not just do baseball?
Whenever they can. Right now, there is, right now, there is a planned concert in August. Um, they, I'm already, and I'm not, I don't wanna say um, which ones they are. But there are already one or two events that we host in, that are not city events, there are someone else sponsored events that may move to the stadium.
I'm looking at August Everfest.
Um, well, August, I, I don't know if that's gonna go this year, but there, there are others. Um, and that is one of the, kinda one of the wild cards here. Because what you see in this list are not single, all single events. The Friday music series, seven or eight of those for, yeah. Um, the midweek music and market, seven or eight of those. So I think it's sixty some events total that we are, that we are working with.
If you don't mind.
Well, and I guess I'm just wondering like how much is going to be asked of the city and our resources for other road closures and things like that where, you know, secure, extra secure, all of that.
Yeah.
So, last week I met with Flying Boxcar Staff, their community relations team. And there's an event that they're hoping to plan, this is not a concert, this is gonna be a series. Um, so, I don't know what that looks like. So that's gonna be something that we're probably gonna have to examine. Because right now with how we just rewrote our downtown event grant policy, it's, events are happening on city roads, city park, because we were trying to create those boundaries. Um, so, that's gonna be something new and different and something to think about. Because I foresee uh, a lot of events wanting to move into Meredith Park. So, and, and everybody's gonna come to the city asking for money. So we need to figure that out, I feel like sooner than later, what that looks like, creating a policy. Do we have something separate, or is it part of the downtown event grant and do we rework that? Um, I'm open to ideas and suggestions, but the one that I met about last week was yoga in the park. Um, so, there's a group that's going to try, this is all still preliminary, nothing has been set in stone. But with, they're working in conjunction with us before our midweek music and market series. So the yoga would happen from three to four, or four to five. And, no, I'm sorry, from five to six. And then our music would start at six o'clock down in University Plaza. So, the Flying Boxcar Staff has been great about bringing us into the equation and what that looks like. But again, the only thing that's been set in stone is a concert on August eleventh, um, which we've already met internally about that. We've met with Flying Boxcar Staff a little bit in regards to that. So, it's going to look different, but no one knows what that looks like then.
We're hopeful, we're hopeful that, once we get into the baseball season a little bit, we've been meet, we're actively meeting with them on a weekly basis, just to make sure we have as many ducks in a row that we know about, taken care of, that we're, we're hoping that we'll get into a flow of what, if we need a street closing, if, you know, we need HPD presence, you know, something like that. The same will be true for events. We're not gonna know what we get with events until we get, because there's probably an opportunity to have twice as many people at an event as you have at a baseball game. So that's gonna create a separate dynamic that the boxcars have committed to working with us on, to try to come up with kind of a standard operation as to how we're gonna, how we're gonna work that.
And we, and we are already planning and Brittany and even Scott have already worked with them to, for the city to do some sponsorships and some promotions. And none, that type of money is not reflected here.
Right.
This is just.
It's within your budget, it's within her budget.
Right.
And I.
I just wanna say, just as, I mean, I know we're getting a little bit off, off.
No, that's what these conversations are for.
But when you bring that policy back, Brittany, I'm just gonna ask to please keep in mind the reason, the, the, the reason that the change occurred in the first place was, and this is my term, because of double dipping. And I don't think that it's the city's responsibility, this is my personal opinion, to fund operations of private facilities.
Mm-hmm.
Um, especially when they were stood up as being, and, and sold as being self-sufficient.
Mm-hmm.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And that's the whole reason why we made that change.
So when you come back, cause you said we're gonna have to, I think you said rework or rethink. Um, you know, that I think needs to be the lens that this is looked through.
That is, absolutely.
Yeah, so.
And.
We'll come back to that when you.
Excuse me. Ultimately, our goal is we have University Plaza, which doesn't require a street closure. That be, that means that doesn't require barricades, that doesn't require police, that doesn't require the extent of public works, posting no parking. There are just so many elements that go into these different events that.
Fire, fire.
Yes.
I was remiss earlier when I missed that.
And as much, as much as we enjoy having things on the street, thunder in the square, crumpets on the drop, you know, closing something, we, we would, we would welcome being able to move those so we don't have to shut down streets and do all of that. While at the same time, still providing access so that people know the arts and entertainment district is open, there's restaurants and do, you know, just like for a ballgame. So, tha- that's kinda where we're at as far as University Plaza stuff, which is fairly innocuous when it comes to additional staffing, as opposed to street closures, multiple street closures for extended periods of time. Um, and, but while also still keeping people in the air.
There's something to be said for certain events that are street festivals. That, that lend themselves to that and that create an energy around a street festival. Just to use the street just as a place to have it, a hundred percent.
Yep.
We've got other locations.
Yep.
Um, so, I mean, I don't wanna say no, no, nothing on the street.
Right.
But at the same time, to the extent that it's not necessarily a street festival, it's just a convenient place to hold it, you know, there are other options, so.
Aren't these great problems though?
Gosh.
They are.
You remember back in the day Downtown Live and, well, August Everfest, when it was on the street. Uh, now there's another place to do that.
Well, and not only do we have, not only do we have Meredith Park, we'll have Hub City Brewery, which I believe they're planning to do outdoor, some outdoor music, and then we have Live at Hub City Vinyl. Um, so we have a lot of new additions within the last year.
Yeah.
Where we can really expand the whole arts and entertainment district.
And which we don't have to get intimately involved in, in creating it or managing it, so.
Very exciting.
Yeah.
And so while, I mean, and Recreation is here too, and they host a number of events. And there's a lot of things that they do that aren't even reflected here in their fit room and such. But I, I do wanna say why Brittany is here. You know, we can't just look at the events and look at Brittany. I mean, Brittany is more than events. Community engagement is more than events. Community engagements is also A and E District, is also Main Street. It's also our face, it is community engagement. And it is more than just events, so, just a thought.
I, I'd just like to add that I'm a little bit on the opposite end of that spectrum with, I think the events in my mind, um, getting people downtown, walking around, creating more of a healthy foot traffic downtown. So whatever we do, if, if things naturally go to other venues, whether it be the brewery or the ballpark, um, whatever we can do to try to tie them in to get people walking around after or before the event, I think.
We can do that through the cultural trail, through the flow of the cultural trail. We've talked about that also, to try to spice up the cultural trail during those types of events, whether they're in Hub City. Because Hub City Vinyl is, is a short distance.
Right.
Um, Hub City Brewery is at the end of, at the end of the trail. And then Meredith Park is right in the middle of it, so.
I think there's something to say about some of the events that happen downtown in the streets that, you know, just bring us a, a feel of community of, you know, of coming together. And so I'm with you on that. Like, I like that we got different spots, but I also like when we're in our streets. Like, I, I appreciate those moments that we're in the streets.
And again, you won't see much, much change, at least this next eight, nine months. Cause we just don't know what we don't know yet.
Right.
Uh, but certainly we'll know better this time next year as to how, what the lay of the land is. Which again, may provide opportunity to do something completely different from our standpoint. Uh, Hagerfest is something that we brought back, those, you know, that's the first thing I remember when I moved here forty years ago was, we walked right in the middle of Hagerfest on West Washington Street. Um, Brittany's bringing that back and that's gonna be, I think that's gonna be a fun event.
That's gonna span the whole length of the cultural trail and we'll use Hub City Brewery and um, Live at Hub City Vinyl. And we're also gonna have four to five muralists painting during that same time. Um, so, yes, and to your point, Councilmember Schindler, um, we, since I started in two years ago, we hit the ground running with events just to build that energy. And I think we have that energy now. And now with Meredith Park and the other additions, the goal for us is Main Street and the Arts and Entertainment District is to take a step back, evaluate what events bring value to downtown and to the area. And then also add more strolls or things like that, actually getting people into the businesses. Because what I've heard from business owners is, just because we have events, doesn't mean people are going into the businesses. So if we're doing an event just to have an event, that's great to build morale. But the whole reason why we do events is to bring business downtown. So if it's not doing that, we need to figure out a different way to actually make that happen.
Yeah.
So.
And the scavenger hunt was awesome.
Yeah, scavenger hunt, we've done the scavenger hunt, we did the flower tour. So I think those were trial runs for how we get businesses to participate, the interest in the community for that. So I think those are things we can build off of.
Do we have um, downtown like places where people, if they walk their dog or they pick up the stuff and throw it in there? All right. I see that in a lot of cities that they have like the food.
Whether they do it or not, it's different.
I don't see them, I don't look for them. But one of the things I see in some of the other cities that wanna promote walk, people walking is they put, businesses put dog, uh, water or dog food out. And then you see people sitting outside eating and their dog is, is drinking water too, and I don't know. This might be a good thing for some of the businesses downtown to do.
We are having a Main Street Business Owners Meeting on April thirtieth and we are going to focus heavily on what's gonna happen when all of this extra foot traffic comes, starting within the next month. So, yes, that's a great idea.
Okay. All right, so I think, unless you need Brittany some more, we'll try to get through some more budget information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brittany. Unless you put this down. All right, so we're gonna go to the financial projection section in the general fund.
Just memorize.
We're gonna hit just a couple more things and then I'm gonna turn it over, um, to City Administrator Scott Nice Warner for a few minutes. Um, so in the financial projection section, this evening, we're gonna really just look at the general fund. Um, we will come back and be looking at the, at the others. This section, I think I mentioned maybe the first, first night of the review. It shows an extra year of detail or an extra year of history. So instead of seeing just one year how we ended fiscal year twenty-three, you're gonna see two years, fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three. You're also gonna see four additional years beyond fiscal year twenty-five budget. Um, we're gonna start on page three. But, but really, section six. This section is not in dollars, we round everything off to thousands. Um, because we have so much more columns and data, it is so much smaller. So everything is condensed, but again, it's still the general fund. All the details that you have here that are fiscal year twenty-three through fiscal year twenty-five can be found in greater detail in section two, which is the general fund section like we just mentioned, okay? But I wanted to take a minute on this section, in the financial projection, section six, on page three, general fund, and it is just the revenue section. So on this page, again, you see fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three. Then we're gonna see fiscal year twenty-four, um, revised budget, our current year budget, and fiscal year twenty-four estimated actuals, as well as fiscal year twenty-five proposed budget. And you're gonna say, Michelle, you and Brooke have already told us these numbers. We go to the bottom for fiscal year twenty-five, we see the sixty-three million, almost sixty-three point one million. Yes, we've hit those numbers over and over. But what I wanted to make sure we're looking at is in our out years, the very next one, fiscal year twenty-six projections. If nothing else changes, if our revenue source, so in fiscal year twenty-six, we will be in our third and final year of our triennial assessment on our property taxes. Typically, in our third and final year, the increase is very much smaller, it's very incremental. Um, so, again, as you start to come down, we're not anticipating any other huge changes in any of the other revenue side. So I want you to come down about three quarters of the way and you're gonna see, it would be, it would be in color, but it's black and white here, but it's shaded and it says bolted. Needed revenue source, six point nine million. This is just simply, if nothing else changes, our revenue sources end where we think they're gonna be and where we're projecting for twenty-five and twenty-six for growth. Gonna need an additional six point nine million somehow, some way, some shape. Flip the page. Page four is the expenses. And again, I want us to focus on fiscal year twenty-six. Given where salaries and wages, which salaries and wages, we talked about last week, are a little over sixty-one percent of all the expenses of fiscal year twenty-five budget. Given the trend for salaries and wages and benefits and increasing costs and inflation factors, plus what is currently in our CIP asks and the increase in our debt service. Our expenses are gonna go to seventy point three million. So either by this time when I sit here next year, or when you get this document, April one, you're gonna be balanced, but either on the expenditure side where we're thinking we're gonna be, is gonna be greatly reduced, or your revenue, we have to find a new source that gives us a whole bunch of additional revenue. Just wanna make sure I'm stopping to mention that now.
So I, I just wanna make a very general, very high level comment. And I think that as we look at that between now and then, um, to really look hard, have the city really look hard at, um, other additional opportunities, both at the state level and the federal level for revenues. I don't wanna just say grants, but revenues in the sense that, um, there are a lot of programs out there. I know we take advantage of a lot of programs, but I also, I don't know, I was looking at the mayor, sorry. Um, there, we take advantage of a lot of programs, but I think there are a lot of programs at, at the state and federal level that we could potentially benefit from. We currently have an advocate, a lobbyist if you will, on the state level. Uh, we could use that on the federal level. Um, and I think we could even use our current group, uh, at the state level even, even more than we're doing. Um, so as, as we're spending the next year, trying to figure out where the six point nine million dollars is gonna come from, I think that's a good place to start.
Okay. So I would just like to take a minute because we're looking at just the general fund. And our grant position, but most especially Brooke Garver, does all the reconciliation for all the grants, for the city to meet all the requirements. And in fiscal year twenty-five, we have included in all the funds seventeen point four million dollars in just grants. And what we do in the budget, we don't include. And what we do in the budget, we don't include a grant unless we know we already have it and we're planning to spend it. We have applied. If there's ones that are out there, like, for instance, ARC grants, community legacy grants, SDF grants, which are state, we typically have been able to apply, and we have been successful. But what we do not do is, I do not put them in future budgets, because they're not open yet. We haven't applied, and we don't know where we're gonna spend them. So really, when I put the grants here, we put the grant revenue, but we also put the grant expenses. And then, and I know you said more opportunities than just grants. I will just caution us, because grants are one-time revenues. And a lot of what, like, 62% of all of our expenses in the general fund are salaries, wages, and benefits. They are not a one-time expense. They are normal, ongoing operational expenses that recur every single year. So we, in looking, would need to find a new revenue source that is a sustainable, ongoing revenue source, right? But yes. But I did just wanna do that, because I, you know, we've added all these new charts, and we talk about high-level stuff, and we look at the summary, but I don't think that we ever come back and stop and do that. I will say, I could, we've got very great working relationships. Our city administrator has great relationships with some state, but also with Congressman Tron's office. They send us newsletters. Their staff was always saying, hey, we saw this, you might be interested. We talk to them a couple times a year to tell them things that are in our future that aren't here yet. Things like, we're looking at finding land and acquisition for fire station and building a new fire station. What is out there and available that would be potential grant funding sources for this future item that we're planning?
Then you have to get budgets approved also at the federal level, which is one thing that held us back a year ago from knowing what was actually going to be the grant amounts. The government never passed a budget. And then also, as far as the one-time, a lot of times, and there's a lot of grants out there that look like they may apply to us, but we're too big for, they, they tried to, to look more at the 25 and, and 25 grand, $25,000 and under population. I learned that in Small Cities Council, in that Small Cities Council was 50,000 and less. So Hagerstown was one of the larger communities there. And all but one of the grants was not, we weren't eligible for, because it was for 25 or less.
Is that for state or federal grants?
Those were federal grants, yeah.
Or sometimes they only do it for 501(c)(3). And while the city is a nonprofit, we are not under the 501(c)(3) article, tactics into Article of the IRS.
And one of the things we can't take advantage of, being in an entitlement community, is we can look more to the HUD-type grants that we may be more eligible for, but then those are so restricted as to what we can spend them. So it's, it's definitely, Congressman Tron's office has been extremely helpful in getting us navigated somewhat through that. They helped Stacy. And once we get this grant coordinator down, then that person, we can, we can get navigated. Of course, that's only gonna be for another six months. Then we're gonna have someone new in there that we're gonna have to deal with that staff and, and see where that goes, so.
And the blessing and the curse. And I think Congressman O'Shire, or Councilmember O'Shire was one of the first. I give you a promotion. O'Shire was one of the first to say it. Yes, it's, it's a great thing for the city of Hagerstown to get $20.4 million in ARPA, but it is a blessing and a curse. It has been very difficult to spend that money. And it's not just federal dollars. State dollars also are restrictive. The other thing, and I, I do just wanna take this opportunity, because $17.4 million may not seem like a lot across the city, but what the reality is with these grants is, it's not, it's not myself, it's not just Brooke. It's not even a grant coordinator to assist. It is the departments running these projects. And we have several departments that are very stretched with their current work projects and current grants. But there's been one or two recently that I've come across, and we've decided not to apply, because in the time period that, which we have, it's just not realistic that we would ever get it spent in that timeframe.
So even hiring the grant coordinator, will that eliminate that issue, to not be able to apply?
Not within the department. I mean, it, it may help us. It gives us somebody to bird-doggle a lot of these grants to make sure that we're eligible, and to have somebody that, so that we're not always looking or happening to find, and the departments can go on and do other things while we have this grant coordinator that's out there working with Compass on a state level, working with Congressman Tron's office, or whoever it's gonna be, on, on a federal level, to help us bird-dog those and understand what the operation is, so that they know, yes, they have the bandwidth to be able to utilize this money, either towards this project that's existing, or towards a second part of a project, or towards a brand-new, so.
But, but then that person, even in writing the applications, we rely on the departments, because we have an MHAA grant application we're doing for, like, the Hager House Museum, and it's taking a significant amount of time.
Right.
And not because Brooke and I don't wanna help, but it's falling to Eric and his recreation staff person, because they know the ins and outs at the Hager House, and exactly what they're gonna be able to do with it. They can talk about the exhibition. Like, they can talk all the technical parts of it, and then they're still the ones who are gonna have to oversee the management of that project to ensure that it gets done at one time, and help with all the quarterly, typically, they're quarterly, compliance reports. Because anytime you get money or funding, you have to, not only do you ask typically for reimbursement draws as you spend your money, but in addition to those, you have compliance reporting you have to do.
Is, is there any specific ask within this section, either on the revenue side or expenditure side? Probably not the debt service side, that you're asking of this body during this budget review period to consider doing to offset that projected and unknown deficit for next year?
The $6.9?
No.
No.
No, realistically, we know. I mean, honestly, and I'll, I'll.
It's just, I mean, it just for me, like, you know, you've presented a balanced budget for this year, right? And that's obviously our primary objective here. And I'm just curious, the amount of time necessary to invest in out-year, even next-year projections, and I use just these two analysis. We have no idea what the politics at the federal level is going to be a year from now, six months from now, nine months from now. That's a huge unknown. And the second is, we also don't know what the impact of growth in two forms, new taxes that we're experiencing within our corporate limits, those areas we intend to expand into our corporate limits, as well as amusement tax, cannabis tax.
Highway user revenue.
Highway user revenue impacted new growth. So I'm just trying to, like, for me, I'm trying to compartmentalize these three areas into these sort of fingers, you know what I mean? That those areas reach into and say, okay, this $6.9, and I don't want to give the public this false impression that, one, we're entering next year at $6.9 and the whole. That's just not a reality, because of all these unknowns. And, two, we're not gonna be able to solve any of that during this budgetary deliberation.
Yeah.
Because in my experience, sitting here, it's usually about 50/50. And depending on how lean or how good the year is, depending on whether it's a better 50% of revenue that solves it, or a better 50% of expense that solves it. And we hope that in this deliberation, it isn't the expense, because then we talk about putting things off on the CIP, making them more expensive downward, and things like that. And so I just look at it and go, okay, you know, we're doing well to get through this current budget cycle.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna put too much stock into, to something that's going to be politically and logistically a much different picture, you know, in December.
And it's, it's all, it's all a point in time. This is all a point-in-time type budget at, at any moment. And we could have anything happen now that, you know, we're gonna have to. But we have a process that, once we get into the budget year, if we find that we want to do more, total example, add an event, and that's $50,000 that was not in this budget. We have a way that we can move money from a budget, another budget, into, we can't increase revenue, so to speak. We can't change the tax rate once it's approved, obviously. We can't really change fees unless the cycle works. But that should already be reflected in here of any fee increases that should go. But what we can do is we can move money around within the budget through the amendment process to, and we do it all the time, to accommodate whatever, you know, we bring to you and you all agree to do.
So, Councilmember O'Shire, you're absolutely correct. The reality is, myself and Brooke may see that number. I mean, when we started in January, we started with an overall deficit of millions of dollars, right? And that is all part and parcel of our balancing and working with Scott as the city administrator and all of our departments. When we, when we come back next year, it's a requirement. It's gonna be balanced. This is just, if nothing else changes, and everything that everybody requested in their CIP stays, right? This is what we could be looking at. Just to kinda take a minute to walk through that process, and I know I did that at a very high level, and we have a budget calendar when we met the very first night. But what happens is, our budget process isn't just, you know, November through March. Our budget process is all year long. It is 52 weeks out of the year. There is a document in this budget book that lists, to the best of our abilities, I mean, our city clerk and our city administrator look, and Brooke and I say, start crossing some of those off, the chart, because we're trying to keep that section of the budget smaller. But in looking and reviewing at the agenda, and what is the topics that the mayor and council have talked about, from the time that we pass the budget to the time that we start the next one, and they list every single meeting and topic, right? So what happens is, the departments start in December. And when they start keying, and they start looking, they start with continuing of the core services which they already provide, unless there's prior discussion that they need to change a service, either new program, edit, delete it at this, at this table. They take into consideration the strategic plan that was adopted and passed by the mayor and council. They look at the city center plan. They look at all those goals that have been set. They take into consideration things that mayor and council have asked to have as a priority. And then they key everything in, and include anything new that they want or need. Then in December, December has come and gone, January 1st. January, we spend three weeks. And when I say we spend three weeks, Brooke and I are in meetings, and usually Scott, for three solid weeks. We meet with every single department to review their capital requests, and not just for a single year, but for five years. Then we come back and meet with every single department when their operational budget requests. Every single department, not just the general fund, every single department. We have conversations during those meetings, and I will say, look, you're looking to increase your budget by a million dollars. Realistically, you're giving me four new programs. The reality says you're not gonna get all four of those up and running in a single year. Do you wanna take time to consider? Do you wanna rank them in priority? Do we wanna think about them? When we come back and we see how much we're starting with towards the end of January as our beginning deficit number, we start working with the departments. I do not, as the finance person say, we're taking 2% from every department to get us back to balanced and brought back to mayor and council. I do not say, let's take $50,000 from police, let's take $80,000 from fire. I work with those departments and say, I need funding. What can you, in your budgets with what you have entered and requested, what can you give and take?
And that's the way we used to do it, like, 10, 15 years ago. And it's demoralizing. As a department head, it's demoralizing to be told, out of your million-dollar budget, you're taking 20%, which we've all been asked to do. And another budget that might have $10 million, taking 20%. My 20% is a heck of a lot, damaged, more damaging than someone else's 20%. So that's why we, we, we started morphing into, you know, trying to work with the prioritization and trying to work on realistic prioritization of what projects that they were looking to do over a five-year time period.
Right. And, I mean, so we take that snapshot, then I don't let anybody change anything. It takes us a couple weeks in February to get balanced. It takes us, in accounting, four, five weeks to do this entire document. This entire document, every single page, every single chart is individually prepared, because it doesn't flow from our computer system. So we are a month and a half just doing this document.
Seven days a week.
Sometimes on Saturday and Sunday. Yes. And then, so, we produce it, and then we sit here in April and May. And April, May is an opportunity for all the discussions and questions that we've had to make. That, that's the type of feedback that we wanna have, right? But even when it is hopefully adopted on May 21st and goes into effect July 1, it doesn't mean that things don't change with this budget. It changes nonstop. It changes nonstop. And if somebody throughout the year sits at a table and council says, hey, you know, you guys, hey, Michelle, can you find that funding? It's what we do.
We can tell from the look of your face over there whether.
Yeah, I can find that. No, I can't find that. I was gonna hurt. Oh, I was gonna hurt.
I know your face is now. I'll be like.
But it is, it is an ever-changing process, and it's, but it's not just one person, one group. It, it really is a group effort. And so when we start the process and we sit here, and at the beginning of April, and we thank all of the departments, and we thank my staff for all the effort, we think, we're thanking this body too, because without the goals in the strategic plan and the city center plan, and all the meetings leading up, we wouldn't have as much input for that.
Yeah, the strategic plan is, was huge. We, we had not, we had not had a strategic plan that we were able to work our budgets off of until, what, about eight years ago?
Yes.
And so it was almost like flying blind until we got here. And then we, we would hear of other projects that, that were looking, that were of interest. But with that strategic plan, we can already look out there and say, hey, we can do this, this, and this fairly quickly. This is, we're gonna need the budget out for. This, we're gonna need budget. And that was extremely helpful. And I'll be bringing this back to you in June or July, how, how your plan looks for this administration. And you're gonna find almost all of them have been completed. So.
Wow.
That, that'll be a nice thing to share with, with. And the, and the ones that weren't, there, there would be, it might only be one, I think, that I can remember. So it's pretty good.
Been a busy few years.
As much changes we've had, shift and retirements and all of that.
Did you?
There were, there were some suggestions of, of interest for possible modifications to the budget. I, I can bring those up now if you'd like to talk about them. You can bring them up if you'd like to talk about them. Again, as Michelle said, anything brought forward now for any continued, for any expense it's gonna create, is gonna require a revenue change, or we're gonna have to cut some, we're gonna have to cut somewhere. But we have done it all the time. So if you, if you are, if you, the body feels that there are those projects out there or programs out there you would like to see changed, we are more than happy to take a look at it. And what we do is, we would take those back through the week. And Michelle creates a nice little chart, almost like a T-account chart, that says, here is the additional funding needed, here is where we're getting it from, and we present that back to you for each project. So I know there's been some talk about Envy, additional funding for Envy. We did talk to, the fire department is here. There was some, there was mention of an apprenticeship program through the fire department. We do have, we did talk to the fire department about that, and I don't know if Chief Tobacco wants to come up. But we do have 60 grand in the budget to start, in this budget, to start the apprenticeship program. I think, and Chief can, can elaborate on it, that that 60 grand is probably what the bandwidth of the department would be to get this started and then look at FY '26. to get this started and then look at FY twenty-six for additional monies.
Oh, yes, sir, I'd be correct. We had a program in place, a volunteer incentive program. Uh, this is additional money to expand into a, an apprenticeship program. And the amount of money we calculated we needed to get the program started in the initial year has been met. Uh, we feel that we can fully execute the plan this year, uh, with the funding that's available, so...
And what was that amount? It's in there?
Just for the cadet, sixty thousand.
And this is, when you talk about apprenticeships, specifically, this is, um, just to use a cliche phrase, to grow our own, to, to help develop the ranks of Hagerstown Fire Department with new firefighters from our general area.
And is that generally what that, the goal of that is?
Yes, sir, and like, almost all public safety agencies across the country having difficulty attracting, uh, new members, right? And so, uh, this gives us an opportunity to reach to a apprenticeship level ages sixteen to twenty. Uh, we have some criteria that we're looking for, city residents, particularly from the tech high school program. County residents is a tier-two, and then outside the county is tier-three. Uh, trying to increase the diversity, inclusiveness of the department and bringing them in. By incentivizing this program, we would give them a, an inside look in what it's like to work with the Hagerstown Fire Department, with the intent that we provide some training to them. They get to feel for the department and how it works, and hopefully that would be a pool for us to go to when we're ready to hire. So it increases our hiring pool. Uh, the thing that goes along with that is also it gives us some volunteers to help, and we are a combination department. We rely on volunteers to assist us with our staffing, especially on the bigger incidents.
That's a new effort, and the sixty thousand dollars is new funding for that new...
Right. So in that category line in their budget, they have eighty-five thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-five. Twenty-five is for something different, which typically they've spent, don't quote me, on average about between five and six. So even going to twenty-five was increasing the other volunteer incentive program. We did an extra sixty thousand for this. And again, it was in combination of working back and forth, right? Finance, working with fire.
Good. I was just enormously surprised to hear just how many of our firefighter fighters will all do a fantastic job, but travel hours and hours and hours to get to Hagerstown for their job.
For sure.
That's, that's a lot of our staff.
A lot of, a lot to do.
Across all departments.
I, I hear you.
Yeah.
To the extent that we can grow our own, that's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, I think the important thing is, we're starting with, uh, high school age and recent high school graduates, and focusing on city residents, county residents, and then outside, with the intent that we're, we're pulling our people in, uh, to have the interest level and hopefully bring them on board as the openings come along.
And as, as the program and everything is further along and they're ready, it's probably a future agenda topic that would come here anyway to just discuss a new program that they were getting ready to deploy, right? So, you'll hear more about it later as they're ready to put it in action and implement.
All right.
You give us sixty?
I'm five sixty.
Five sixty. Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep, thank you. Um... Uh, a couple others, uh, some, some, a mention of increasing the mayor and council line item. A couple of things to tell you about that. Um, any, I, not quite sure what was involved, uh, in, you know, what, where, where you'd want to add to. Um, I can tell you that if you're looking at expenses related to travel or training or anything, that's going to take a charter change, uh, to make sure we get the charter updated, uh, to reflect additional expenses. Also, any changes to how much the mayor gets paid or how much you all get paid would have to, could be done, but it would go into effect in the next administration. So, if, if you would like that to be considered. Uh, we've, we've looked in the past at, uh, at what others are getting. Um, and we, we, we fit pretty, pretty good, uh, in with those up and down eighty-one. Um, on the mayor's side, really good, um, for the most part. Uh, Maryland, well, in this area, you can't go down to Frederick and do that, but like Chambersburg, Martinsburg, Winchester, Cumberland, um...
Similar sounds.
Yeah, so, council members, uh, sometimes get a little more, sometimes they get nothing, um, which...
Yeah, what you pay for. So, yeah, it's obvious that it would be for the next administration.
It would be for the next administration. That's something we can always look at.
But this budget, the way it gets the budget works is because it's, transcends the calendar year, half this year, half next year.
Right.
And then the next administration starts effectively at the end of this year.
They get six months' benefit, yep, and then it has to be for the full year after.
So, so right now, both combined are at two hundred and eight thousand dollars in the budget. So we would need to know what those increases look like, or, we could, this body could continue to have those discussions and create those charter changes, and then once that's done, because it will take time, we can make a budget amendment at that time.
Yeah.
Based on what you're looking to increase.
When was the last time that the salaries were evaluated?
Oh, darn it.
Well, evaluated, so...
That's been since you've been city administrator.
Yes.
Publicly reviewed.
Evaluated.
Not actually changed.
When was the last change, do you know?
I could look it up.
Was that a nineties council member?
It's been a long, long...
What's that? What'd you say, nineties? Ninety-seven? Ninety-seven?
It's been a long, before I got here, I know that for sure.
Ninety-seven for the mayor.
For the mayor.
I'd be interested in the percentage of increase from that time.
We can get that for you. We'll get that for you.
Like what that looked like.
And just to note that a charter change takes at least, um, fifty days after it's approved. So it would have to be something that would be in place before November fifth.
So definitely something to add for...
In order for it to be effective for the next administration.
Work agenda topics now. But again, is that something that you're needing to have added to a budget, not knowing what that's going to look like? Or do you want me to wait to make a budget and then it, once you're further along in those conversations?
I'm not interested in waiting.
Well, I think maybe the concern that I have is that we make this issue unnecessarily political.
Yep, during...
I, and I say that because, and I use, and I hate to use like, other hats, you know, that I wear, but we had similar language in Myersville and some years. In recent years, I said, "You know, we have a split election process." So, it is even more convoluted because it affects some people doing the exact same job that have to wait another two years for, for the next, you know, candidates. And so it makes it even, even a little more odd. And it's because the language within the charter has the same, in my opinion, archaic language that many other municipal charters have across the state, which is, you review it and it gets applied to the next candidates. We don't, the county doesn't do that, to my knowledge, uh, uh, holistically for all of the, all of the, the other elected entities in the county. They, they have an evaluation, you know, on certain periods of time. It gets applied to, to the incoming individuals for those positions, but it isn't, it isn't a political election-oriented evaluation process.
Well, it's a committee that, it's a committee that chooses that.
And so I just, like for us in Myersville, we removed that, 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 um, language to say, you know, "The mayor and council will review this as part of their deliberations associated with the fiscal budget review." In other words, it provides that body who should responsibly have that determination over any changes, no different than any other change in the budget, on that regular basis within, within that budget. And I think that frankly, you know, I've been through the last number of years where it is been taboo to even broach the subject in a public nature, because the city has been constrained on finances. And that ebbs and flows, right? Ebbs and flows, and some years you think about considering, and some years you don't. But nobody does it, right? Because it's a political sort of hot potato up at this table to have to do. And you have to remove the politics of that if you're ever going to, to sit down as a body and freely and functionally analyze it and say, "Okay, you know, what is an appropriate figure?" And to look at this and say, "This figure hasn't been changed since at least nineteen ninety-two," if, if I'm not mistaken, um, but every other figure in every other office in the land and every other figure in every other department that you evaluate, and every other figure and every other operation and capital expense you have has, but we're not going to touch this singular item because the politics associated with it just seems dumb to me.
Yeah, really.
And I just, so, I appreciate the comment that, you know, that I think is the first place to start. To me, it's no different than the dialogue that the city had,
It is.
What, ten, twelve years ago, when it said, "You know what? We're not going to have our own election off-cycle anymore."
Yeah.
I guess to me, it just, it, and, and that body at that time, rightly and intelligently so, understood that they were cutting themselves, what, six months of a term?
Right.
Because they made the appropriate decision to say, "Government shouldn't work this way for this particular item." And I just look at it and say, "Government shouldn't work this way for this particular item, and we need to step back and say, 'Okay, how do we amend the charter to make it work the way we want it to work, not the way it was designed to work politically fifty years ago?'"
Yep.
"And then how do we implement that for future budget cycles so we're not, uh, beholden to this, 'Oh, my gosh, we got to get done in the next six months,'" or, you know, "Or it's a political hot potato for the next four years."
Right.
Because that doesn't make any sense to me. Um, and, and then you, then you have the freedom to do that evaluation and implement it in the appropriate budget cycle in which you, as the elected body, simply decide.
Well, you can't. I mean, I think if I'm following what you're saying, Councilman. Are you suggesting that, that the charter be amended to make changes by, by a body for the body?
Completely.
I don't think you can, I think it's against state law. I don't think you can.
No. You can amend your charter through the charter process.
But I, isn't there...
If you, the elected body, determine that charter, um, to be.
All right. I was under the assumption that state law was that an elected body cannot set its own compensation. That it's always for the next elected body.
I got that.
Yeah, I...
We can confirm.
I think we should definitely look at that, because I just, I don't believe that.
And if that, if, if I'm wrong, then your, your approach is absolutely appropriate. Otherwise, you're talking about twenty twenty-nine. You're talking about making a change in twenty twenty-nine.
I hear that. And I think that, and I'm saying that, I think that process is not, is not the appropriate course to take.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm saying, I think there's a law that...
That seems like the most fair way to do it.
If that were the case, if that were the case, then like, split-cycle elected bodies, you know what I mean?
Well, the Board of Education did a, an adjustment a few good year, and, yes. Three people, I may have this backwards, but three people got the raise, if you want to call it that, changed the compensation, and then the other four had to wait two more years till after their election. So they were off.
Cycle.
Cycle. And again, I think it's because there's a law. If there isn't, and if I'm wrong, then that's...
Yeah, I think we need to look at our...
Right. So, so that, but that brings me back to my question. So my question is this. We're going to come back, and, and I don't necessarily mean me when I say we. First step is to come back and work right now on charter language change and amending the charter.
For what?
A lot of stuff.
For whatever it is that you're needing to do with adding money to the mayor and council budget line items, right?
I just think that, I just think that that's...
Because right now, we don't trump the charter.
Like, I don't think anybody sitting here is saying they don't have interest in it. I would just like to, to review the avenues we have and options available to execute that change.
Okay.
Yep. And, and again, once that happens, once that happens, and amounts are decided, whether they're included as in a hard, hard dollar amount in the charter, or whether the, the group decides an amount that will be the amount for the next one or two fiscal years. We can make a budget amendment at that, at that time, and I'm not saying for first year twenty-six.
I just do, like, I would, I just think that requires some type of evaluation to say, "Hey," you know...
And if it, if that, and if it is required to be for the next body after the next election, then that evaluation should occur midterm, which is exactly what everybody, you know, like the, every other elected official in Washington County...
Yeah, I don't feel like that, that's an matter that could be resolved like, in the next three months.
Correct.
I just don't.
I, I understand. I'm agree, I agree.
We could at least start the process.
Yeah.
Yeah, just looking at the charter.
And there is a, there is a documented process for charter review, yeah.
In order for it not to be evaluated, or for it to be evaluated and not become some political hot button.
Right.
So that would be in the item?
We can get our left...
In the future, yeah.
Okay.
Um, and there are a couple of other things. One of, uh, one of them relates to the, to the demolition fund that you, that Councilman Alshire has talked about before. Um, we actually met today, and there is, yell at me if I'm not right, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So, two hundred and twenty, yes, yes, enough. Two hundred and twenty thousand in fiscal year twenty-five's budget. One hundred thousand is in CDPG, and again, we'll review that in special revenue funds. Then, with inside code administration, there is a hundred and twenty thousand within one of their line items under regular abatements.
Right.
Separately, six hundred and fifty thousand that we have, that is two grants in combination. Five hundred thousand, which is our blight money that we were able to establish through TRON, which is being administered by HUD.
Right.
And a hundred and fifty thousand, which is a, a community legacy state grant which expires before our blight money does.
Right.
So we, and that six hundred and fifty isn't in the budget because we have to create different accounts and categories, but it's a hundred percent grant-funded. So we're going to make a budget amendment, we're going to add the revenue, we're going to add the expense.
Right.
For the six fifty.
Right.
Yeah, I think for me, I've always said, and, and, you know, I, I understand that when we make adjustments to the budget, that it's my responsibility to either have the fortitude to say, "Hey, taxpayer, you know, here's what I want this adjustment for, and here's what it's going to cost you." And I think I've said for the last eight years probably, however long we've had the first third program in place, you know, that was expected to generate about a million and a half dollars, right? And I just, I, I continue and have always felt that we should have something similar within that first third program that includes a provision to remove structures. I don't know what that figure is. To me, it's always been two hundred and fifty thousand, only because I have stated in the past that two hundred and fifty thousand, and I was back then, was about a penny, right?
Yes, it was.
And a penny was worth, at that time, about twelve bucks of your taxes. So, the average taxpayer is paying twelve hundred dollars in taxes. If you told me, if you came to me as a taxpayer and said, "Hey, Chris, we'd like to have twelve dollars from you that we're going to put into a fund and start tearing down some of the garbage buildings that we see, uh, in our community," I would say, "Here's my twelve dollars." In other words, "Here's my additional tax penny." That's how I've always felt about it, that's as simple as I can be.
Yeah.
Because I think the second component to that, now that you've said that there is funding that we've identified, is the curiosity of where. And I say that because any one of us can drive around this community in any neighborhood, and we can all easily find the house that looks like crap or the property looks like crap that is a blight and has a negative impact in this community and should be removed way more quickly than any of us could point out the nice house in that neighborhood, right? That should be accentuated.
Right.
Uh, that's getting charged the higher tax bill.
And...
And I use the example... Snyder Avenue, to me, is like the prime example.
Can we all pick that one?
No, it's disgusting.
Everybody knows it, and the only reason, in my opinion, the only reason we haven't touched it is because it's sitting on Snyder Avenue and not Virginia Avenue.
No.
I just...
That's not it.
Well, it is on the little side street that you would have to go absolutely out of your way to, to pass.
No, it has been held up in a state issue for the last six years.
Right.
And...
How about the little...
But at what point, at what point do we go from, it's blight, it's an acceptable
Right.
visual presence of blight to, it is an absolute public safety issue, it should be removed immediately.
Right. That is a very difficult...
Question in every...
Yes.
Legally.
Legally, but...
But...
Snyder Avenue was almost topic one to set, to that.
Can you list this, you ticked off that list pretty quickly. Can you say it again a little bit slower?
For which?
For the, where the money comes from.
Oh, for me. So there's a hundred thousand dollars if you want to look right now in section.
Just say it. I'll, I'll, I'll look later.
Okay.
I don't want to take anybody else.
Well, that's fine. In the special revenue fund section four and CDBG, you'll see a line that says demolition, a hundred thousand. And code and administration, you're not going to be able to see it because it, just like events. There is in the general fund section, the code and administration department expense, but you're not going to see that specific line item. But a hundred and twenty thousand is in code administration. Separately, not reflected in the budget book, is six hundred and fifty thousand for two different grants we've already accepted. Five hundred thousand, that is a five hundred thousand dollar blight money that we secured through TRON as being administered by HUD. So we have got lots of requirements. So again, we got five hundred thousand dollars, Councilmember Alshire. So we have, once we navigate the legal process of several of the parcels we're going to start with. Then we got the trick of some of them, we can readily and availablely use the five hundred thousand and some we cannot because it goes to future use. There's a lot of restrictions because of HUD. And then a hundred and fifty thousand in community legacy grant. Again, that six fifty is not reflected in.
You'll hear more about this over the summer.
Yes. So we are working first on the twenty-five parcels, I think that this group and this body already said. That's been no bid tax sale items that are also blighted and vacant, but we were working with our attorney today. We're really trying to navigate the legal component of it. Was there any others? Was there any others that this group need to talk about for items that need added?
You mean under demolition?
No, I mean, is there something else that you want to talk about tonight for general fund? Because the goal is going to be, we only have a handful of meetings left. And I need to cover the other funds. I want an opportunity, I think one of the questions you asked, Councilmember Brittany, and we took notice, you know. We're going to come back and we're going to talk about the, the general fund CIP, capital projects. But then we do have a host of other funds. So I would like to, I would like, I would like to kind of finalize our topics with general fund or we can say. Michelle, we'll bring them back to you next week. Keep in mind, we got April the thirtieth, May seventh, and May twenty-first. So whatever you give me to add, Councilmember Alshire, I'm going to bring back, I'm going to bring back my chart. And you're going to look at something and you're going to say, Michelle, you are not going to decrease money in events. Take that off of there right now. Go back to the chart. I, I'm only saying that because that, that's typically what happens. So it's going to take us longer than a week. To be respectful of the departments in here as we go back and forth, but we need to finalize that.
And the other, the other big discussion we're going to have that we haven't really talked about much over the last several years is the health insurance fund.
Yes, I want an opportunity to have that discussion.
Yeah, we, we need to have a serious discussion about health insurance fund. Maybe not so much for this year, but next year is going, yeah, next year is going to be some, some serious discussions.
Where, where, which fund does Compass Advocacy fall under?
General.
So a federal advocacy group would fall under general.
General.
General fund, taxpayer dollars.
So that's another one.
And that would be one where, that would be one where we could investigate or go through the RFP process or, or the procurement process, whatever we have to do. To identify who that lobbyist would be. Maybe it is Compass if they would want to, just like we go through with like city attorney, we have to do an RFP. Uh, and then when the time comes, we see what that amount's going to be, then we can make an adjustment if that's the, the will of the body that wants to go that route.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't the funds just be adjusted now? Why wait till that, go through that process? Why not put the money in the budget now?
Well, first of all, y'all would have to discuss whether that's something you'd want to do. Second of all, we have to be, we have to be cognizant of what that amount would be without first understanding what federal lobbyists go for these days. Because we don't want to put too much in and then have to cut from another department. Um, to cover it if we don't, if we don't have to.
So would the discussion take place at the table to talk about sending the RFP out and then we would send the RFP out and see what it would cost before it would go farther?
You could do that. That would be.
I would be interested in that. I would like to have the discussion publicly to be able to talk about the process. And then set, you know, if there's the will of the body to put an RFP out. Because if it can get, I mean, even, even if it is one-time funding, but maybe there's demolition federal funding that we don't know about and things like that, so.
Yeah.
I agree.
I agree.
We could put it on the, that's three of you. We could put it on the agenda.
There we go.
Yeah.
Talk about it.
But.
A mayor and council discussion. You're not looking for me to bring anything back.
Um, I would like to just understand.
You'd like to understand the process and the RFP and then go, and then we could work on it, yeah. That's, that's, that's fair enough.
And kind of like what kind of grants there could be that we could, you know, be looking at potential. I do want to go back one thing, the NV, uh, funding that I am, NV was, uh, the program coordinator was in HPD. An HPD budget. Of course, the NV program coordinator is not, is non-existent right now. So rather than it being under HPD's budget, I would like to see the program coordinator in, under a general fund in a position. And not just the twenty-five thousand dollars that was given in our funding. So not for programming and things like that, but more of someone that can be the coordinator.
It would still be in the general fund regardless of where it would land unless you want to put in utility. I don't think it needs, it's going to go in the utility.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it isn't just for funding for programming, but more of a position. That's my, that was.
Is there, what is the funding for the NV program in the budget?
There isn't.
There's not, there's not, there's not an organization.
They understand it's not a program and it doesn't have an organization.
And that's the decision this body would have to make is that if it wants to become, if you want it to become a city responsibility under a city department. Then that's going to be a, that's going to be another conversation y'all need to have as to what kind of structure that needs to be. Who's going to run it, uh, who's going to, who are the worker bees, that kind of thing, and then go from there, yeah.
Thank you.
So, yes.
Sure. Yeah, that, that could go on the agenda too to, to talk about.
I, so I concur with Shelley.
Okay.
One, one final quick thought. I mean, we talked about this earlier, so it won't take a lot of discussion. We talked about public engagement. We talked about the huge benefit. We talked about the fact that that single hand, no, it's not fair. That that is a big force in changing the perception. The mayor commented about how, how things are looking now, how they're feeling now. So I think was mentioned that the increase was from forty-something thousand to fifty thousand.
On a specific line item that is the grants that.
Go to.
That Brittany is doing externally.
Those would be for external programs.
External programs.
I, I personally would be interested in expanding, I mean, the community engagement department is essentially Brittany and a part-time. I mean, and it's a lot more than just events, as we said. I'd, I'd personally be interested in at least adding a, a full-time position to that.
Okay.
As, as much as that seems to be the face of the city right now.
Yes, we all agree with that. There may be opportunities within the organization to make that happen without there being a budgetary impact.
In addition to the part-time?
In addition, there would be two and a half.
Two and a half, right, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Done at an operational level under the direction of the city administration.
Right.
So one, one way or another is what you're saying?
It'll happen one way or another.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think, I think probably the more important piece is, is, is the opportunity for those that want to have events. That we could either help sponsor, that would be somewhere else, right? Uh, but then also to, to help take some of the, the pressure off of, off of her. And ultimately, when it comes down to it, Amy Riley, Amy's got, Amy, Amy works her tail off for the, for the, in, in the parks department, in the, in the recreation department. Uh, and she's got folks that help her over there, but still those are, you know, uh, those are huge events that they all put on. And, uh, there is definitely a, uh, we definitely see that need.
Do we also need to consider or have a discussion to dis, consider additional funding for more of those third-party events? Because the trajectory's been from like zero and it's now growing exponentially and it's been, you know, the success is obvious. So I know you said you bumped it up from forty-five to fifty, but.
I think one of the things that you said was to kind of see how the summer goes with the stadium open. And how the events are happening, and maybe that's for the next elected body to be able to discuss once we get through. The fieldhouse opening at the end of the year, you know, um, the stadium being able to see where the city li, lies in that and events.
Fieldhouses.
For the next elected body.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned the fieldhouse. Fieldhouse could be another wild card. That's going to be another place that we can have events. You know, whatever be, yeah, sporting events, it could be city-sponsored sporting events, you know, we don't know, that's going to fall. Eastern sports management will have a much more of an impact on that than, than probably the city would, but we're going to be, I'm sure we'll be asked to be a sponsor or do something with that. So, yeah, we're just at, we're, we're at that, at that place where we, we, we don't know what we don't know when it comes to, when it comes to outside events. And, uh, it's, it's a, it's a great problem to have, honestly.
I just want to make sure that we are, you know, and by giving Brittany as much help as we can, I think that's being more proactive instead of reactive. Because it can be really overwhelming to get all of that going. So just whatever that looks like.
Brittany's still got a couple hours of the, of the twenty-four hour day she can deal with.
So.
She could be better.
Those were.
I, I know I've taken.
So, because I don't want anybody to feel like you can't, they, it can't be a discussion on it.
Yeah.
Um, if you guys would like to, but I, that was kind of what Brittany even asked, was kind of like to be able to see if she's still back there.
Yeah, she's back there.
To be able to see how the summer and stuff plays out. And so, um, I, I just threw that out there as a facilitator, but if y'all would like to have a discussion, we absolutely can.
Yep.
I would.
We'll put that on, yeah.
And next week, when I come back, honestly, I think I'm just going to recap, right? Um, just because I need a good feel because I've gone over my time and there is a lot of other things that need to happen this evening. But from what I've heard, there was going to be, there's going to be additional conversations and topics coming back, one regarding the city charter. But that there was no request at this time of council for a budget change in the fiscal year twenty-five proposed budget. Until you're further along in the char, charter change. A public discussion, um, and about.
That's only if a charter change is necessary.
Right. Well, that's where we've got to know what.
They got to come back with that first.
Yeah, we, we can come back and tell you what in the charter would be, would be affected by any change in a, a line item amount.
Public discussion coming back regarding a federal lobbyist, but before we do anything in the budget, working, public discussion and working on building an RFP on what that looks like if this body wishes to move forward. Having additional conversations around an NV coordinator and what NV looks like in an NV program and if that's coming back to the city. But again, these are additional conversations. I'm not hearing, adjust the fiscal year twenty-five proposed budget as additional conversations need to happen. And then, um, then the last one is expanding of events, but really hearing that we're holding that till we see what these other four new entities are going to do and then look to make changes.
And we got plenty, we got plenty right now to, for what's out there.
Okay. I was, I was going to kick off parking and talk about, talk about their budget, but honestly, I'm going to let them talk about rates. And if you have questions on our budget, it is attached.
Thank you.
And then we got water. Y'all really.
Free parking for everybody.
Whoa, you better.
Sure.
Angela said say that.
Angela's so nice.
Angela just live alone.
Good afternoon or early evening, I guess. So first off, oh, Mike's here. The, this is Angela Zager. This is our parking system supervisor. She's been in our position for about three years now, and she's here to correct me when I say something wrong. The, before we get into this discussion a little bit further, we have two parking decks and a parking garage. So if I say deck or garage, or you reference deck or garage, it's the same thing. It's a parking facility. Um, I don't know why we did that, but that's sort of what it is. So the parking system, just a reminder, is an enterprise fund. It's paid by the user, which is the drivers that go there. The general fund does not put direct dollars into it. Um, so like a utility like water or sewer, the end users are the ones that pay for it. So I put up, well, actually, my son put this together for me, the PowerPoint, the, uh. So what we have here is currently two parking garages with about six hundred and twenty-five spaces. There's about two hundred and ninety-two, give or take, spaces on the street and four hundred additional spaces in parking lots. That's the central lot with Hager, which are connected down here. Rochester parking lot, which is on the east, or the west end of town at the Prospect and Washington. And then the N T M Street parking lot, which is right beside the District Court, which is only like eighteen spaces. We're currently building the Hub City Garage, um, and the cost for land acquisition, design, construction, and so forth is about twelve and a half million dollars. Why did we build it? Well, this is a big part of it, you know, and this is spurring, um, a lot of other development, a lot of other activity. And therefore, uh, the third parking garage talked about for years, um, needed to be connected to a large project. And there just wasn't a project that was being built until this came along. And so the state's investing about ninety million dollars in this facility. What's really important here is that they have no public parking on that site. They built as much as they could and fit it what they could on there, but there's no public parking. A little bit of parking they do have is for their staff and players and that sort of thing. So our current rates, um, for our parking meters, um, we do have some free parking, uh, which is after five o'clock in the evenings. And on weekends and a number of city holidays and such, but right now the parking rate is fifty cents an hour. And that's just showing the, you know, put a nickel, dime, or quarter in. For the parking garages, it's a dollar an hour. For each additional hour, it's a dollar. Um, we have a two dollar fee for after four o'clock to six AM Monday morning. More, more or less, if you've parked in the garage at four oh one PM on a Friday and you left late Sunday night or before six AM on Monday morning, you'd pay a two dollars total. That would be the total amount. Um, we have an eight dollar maximum, an eight dollar lost ticket, and we have a five dollar per vehicle special event fee, which we're going to talk about here more in a second, but. That's rarely been used. The only time that I've known we've used it since I've been running parking since two thousand nine is from Blues Fest and August Tipper Fest. That is the only events.
Why?
Define an event. There was never any really other event that really, yeah.
Those were the big ones.
And so those events took up all the parking in the central lot, sometimes on the street. Blues Fest actually started in the square. And so you're taking up a lot of parking and therefore, you know, we were using the parking garages for that. And so, um, but there was no other events that were that large. Usually for like the Mummer's Parade, we just open it for free because it's such a local thing. We just, we just open it up for free. It's just easier to do that, so. Um, the current rate is fifty-six dollars for a month for a permit in the lot, seventy dollars per month, um, for the parking garages. And we had a student rate that we incorporated a few years ago. We, we bumped it up to twenty-five dollars. All this information is in the memo, a little bit, there's a little bit more in the memo too, that we're going to talk about. Oh, sure.
Sorry.
No.
Student parking rate is for, is that the Bisva school or?
USMH.
USMH?
Both.
Or anybody that's got a student.
ID.
For the most part, it's a student ID, but for, but, but, you know, somebody that's attending HCC is not going to buy a student pass more than likely. The vast majority of them are Bisva and USMH. All right, sure. So we've put in here a number of solutions, um, and mainly, um, what it is about is, as you saw, we're spending twelve and a half million dollars. That's, that's all city. There's no other entities that are, that is in, with us at the garage. There's not county, federal, state, there's nobody else. So this is all on us. So our parking system has to pay that back, you know, over a period of time. And so we've bond financed, I think it's ten point six million dollars. We've used other funding from different sources to pay for all this. But we're going to be seeing a loss for the next, at least in the five years. And so we need to have more drivers and a different rate. And that's the two ways, that's only two ways we're going to make this up. So in the, the one that we've been talking about, the one we've been asked the most about from a lot of people was, what are we going to charge in the new garage, the Hub City Park Garage? And so we've kicked this around quite a bit for some time. And so here's our suggestions. It's your prerogative to say yes, no, or come up with a number yourself. So we'll just go through these and then you can decide what you want to do. So we're talking about charging an hourly rate of three dollars an hour. Now, that sounds like a lot, and it is. So we're talking about charging an hourly rate of three dollars an hour. Now that sounds like a lot, and it is. But the parking lot that was there that we took over was charging three dollars an hour.
Sure was.
Yep. So, that's not, you know, that was charged for years. Um, except for when we're doing Sundays, we'll talk about that a little bit too, in a little bit. Uh, the maximum rate, we usually figure eight hours, um, I got a wrong figure in there, so actually it should be three dollars, it should be twenty four dollars. But we would, we would suggest a maximum rate of sixteen dollars. We'd set the monthly rate at ninety dollars. Now, if you remember, the current rate right now is seventy dollars a permit. But we're suggesting ninety dollars at the Hub City, eighty dollars at A and E, and keep it at seventy at UD. And the reason we keep it lower at UD, or keep it the same, I should say, it's already underutilized. And so if people are willing to pay a little bit less and walk a little bit further, it would encourage parkers in that garage. Right now, we're probably under fifty percent daily. And a UD deck on a weekend may have twenty cars out of four hundred and forty spaces. It just isn't used. It's funny how this garage is used compared to A and E. You'll have a, we'll have a Vennett to Mariner Theater. Like this weekend, right? A and E was sold out. Hundred and eighty five spaces sold out. UD, forty cars, fifty cars, maybe. People are just unwilling to walk.
Central Lot probably had more people.
Central Lot, yeah. Well, part of it is you can't get to UD easily.
Yeah.
When you, when you, you have to flop the block, so you have to know how to get to it. You can't drive from the Central Lot right over to the University Deck. There's no straight shot over.
It is true.
So, it's, um, it's a little odd. But we're looking at a tiered rate there of ninety, eighty, and seventy. Special event rate, this is where it gets tricky. Um, with our current programming or operation, operating system that we have in parking garages, we can't set a rate and then apply it. With the new operating system, we can. My issue, and I've talked to Scott and Michelle for a moment about this, is define a special event. And so, people say, well, it's a ballgame. Well, but they're gonna have a concert, and they're gonna have other events. And so are they events? Mariner Theater has events all the time. Do we charge a special event rate for theirs? Do we, do we figure it's X amount of people? It has to be an event that we think's gonna have a thousand people or more? And so it gets complicated. So we'd like to just keep the, the, the rate at three dollars an hour and just charge it all the time. If you go to the ballgame, uh, uh, I think a ballgame at an average is like two hours.
Three, yeah, three hours.
Or three hours, we'll say.
You want people to stay a little bit to go around downtown.
Right.
But.
So if they, so if they park in three hours, there's, there's nine bucks right there. And we don't know what the fee is for what they're charging at the, at the ballpark yet, do we? The tickets?
Twelve dollars?
I don't know.
I think so.
Not much different.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's twelve.
I, I always thought the special event rate wasn't so much the rate, maybe it is. But it was because you opened the gate and everybody left. As opposed to one car at a time, putting their ticket in, figuring how much it is, paying their ticket. And then leaving either in a kiosk or at the gate. Most people, I guess, do it at the gate. Is there not a benefit to a, a special event rate for five hundred cars leaving at one time?
What's the advantage? What's the advantage?
I, I think.
That they can exit quickly?
That they're not sitting in the deck in their cars for.
Twenty minutes?
Half an hour, hour, or whatever.
We can empty the UD deck in twenty minutes?
Yep.
Now, it's a hundred and eighty five spaces. This will have two exits.
Okay.
It has two entrances and has two exits.
And pay stations on every floor, two pay stations?
Two pay stations are on the first floor. One will be at the front or Antietam Street, and one will be at the rear.
Will you be able to pay at the gate?
You can pay at the gate, but not cash.
Not cash?
Credit card.
Right.
Yep. There's lots and lots of options.
Right.
I'm not sure we're at that place here in this, in the city yet.
And again, this is, if we, if we find that we got people queuing up at pay stations or cars queuing up and, and we, we can reevaluate it. And then, and then go from there.
It's one of the reasons also, um, the entrance is actually off the alley, because you, you have two ways to get in.
And two ways out.
And so you're, what's that?
Two ways in and two ways out.
Well, the, you have two roads at access. You have, you have Rochester Place and you have Court Place. It's kind of odd. You have Rochester Alley or Place on one side, you have Court Place on the other, and the, and the entrance is on Library Alley. So you have actually three different names, street. So you can queue up a lot of people off the street getting in. And when they exit, they go right on Antietam. They go left or right, right on Antietam, they're out.
I think my concern, you know, I agree that, uh. It is difficult for people to want to walk from, you know, downtown to the Broad Axe, or from one parking deck to Meredith's Park. But I also think that there isn't a lot that we offer right now. Not the city, but there aren't a lot of bars and restaurants to go to. And we just, you know, Twenty Eight South just closed and Bulls and Bears isn't operational, so. The incentive, and, and you said, you know, the ballgame lasts for a while, what, two hours, three hours? But then there really isn't anything to do after the game. So to sit at three dollars an hour while the, you know, the clock is ticking or whatever. I just don't know, three dollars is not sitting well with me right now. I just, and I know that things are coming and encouraging people to walk is, is possible, but, I don't know. I wish we could do like a kind of a scale up or something.
When the Chamber of Commerce, right, Washington Chamber of Commerce, had Ron Young here. God, it's been fifteen years, right?
Easy, yeah.
And, you know, he's former mayor of Frederick City, you know, and, and everybody at that meeting was all, was, was discussing, you know. How did you get to s- to, to six or seven parking decks? And, and Mayor Young made it very clear to the group at that meeting. If you want your downtown to thrive, parking has to pay for itself. And you have to make enough on your parking structure to be able to prepare yourself to fund your next parking structure. And so I don't look at this as University Deck or A and E Deck, or even the new City Garage. It's, how do we get to the fourth deck, right? I mean, that, that's, 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 that's been on the books for thirty years. And I remember sitting here when we approved the A and E Deck, and I think it was a three, two vote, and I think, you know, we, we, you know, just luckily got that passed, and there was. A provision in that that said at least thirty five percent of the revenue had to go to pay down the debt service on the deck, and that was what kind of sold the group. You know, and then we, we, we debated for the next ten years, how do we afford the third deck, you know? And so I just, I think that we have to make sure that. We set everything aside and say, you know, what, what's our long-term goal? And for me, the long-term goal is to have four decks in downtown. To have as much parking as we can provide for downtown, so that these buildings, which are huge, and places like the stadium, which aren't going to provide parking on site. And places like Central Lot, which are being gobbled up and, you know, turned into buildings, you know, are going to need parking. And so we're going to have to figure out a way to do that, and I feel like if we take baby steps on that, you know what I mean, at one dollar, one fifty?
I'm not saying one dollar, one fifty.
What I'm saying is all it does is pushes the, the ability for us to provide the parking that we're going to need, for those buildings to be reoccupied. To the maximum marketable degree that we'd like, you know what I mean?
But we also want the people that are visiting our, our area when they come here and they're like three dollars an hour for parking, cause it isn't just Washington County.
I don't think anybody bats an eye at that.
No, who bats three dollars, you think?
Three dollars an hour, and there's nothing to do yet, except go to the game.
I think that that's, I think that's completely different a year from now.
I do too. So, I, in my, I would love to see it be kind of two dollars an hour now and if three dollars an hour in a year.
So for me. We have, because the state made it really clear, you know, it wasn't going to help pay to build parking. For this new ninety million dollar facility, right? And they made it clear. City, this is, this is your responsibility.
Yeah.
So, in order for us to accept and engage and take on that responsibility. Then I think, whatever the number is, if staff's telling me that parking's gotta pay for itself and this is the number, to get there to make sure it pays for itself. And that that burden isn't placed on the taxpayer to, to subsidize that parking facility. Then I'm all for what that number is to make sure parking not only pays for itself. But covers that debt service in a manner that we continue to stay in the black on parking to prep ourselves for the next parking deck that we've gotta build. I, I, I just, I just see it.
When we last talked about rates a few years ago, if you remember, it was, it was contentious.
It was awful.
It was awful. I do, that's why I was, really hasn't come back.
That's why I'm like, wait, wait, wait.
And this property wasn't free. It wasn't like this property was given to us.
I understand.
It cost us, it cost us top dollar.
Partly it was the same reason, was the build.
Right? There was no discount on the product, so you have to cover those costs.
Michelle's gonna make me listen to you, I can feel it.
It sounds to me like there's two driving factors for rates. Eric is talking about using the rate as a incentive to encourage people to move to other decks. You're talking about rates, that I think Michelle's gonna chime in on, to talk about. You know, covering debt service and then putting aside for future debt service, or future.
I think that's the same thing. I think they're saying the same thing. He's saying leave it, leave it low up here and have people walk. And make it high down there, which close to.
The things.
The things.
We knew people were gonna wanna migrate. There's gonna be people who are parking in the UD deck right now that, that work at the District Court. They're gonna wanna park in the UD, or the Hub City Garage, you know, they're gonna move. And so we don't wanna cannibalize the other ones also. But we want people to, I mean, the new garage will not park. Everybody's gonna go to the, to the ballpark. It won't. It's three hundred and ninety eight spaces. So it'll cover a lot.
Four thousand seats.
This might, yeah, exactly. And we knew, and, and we, and we did a study that said, hey, here's what we, here's what we can build.
When you keep talking about it to the degree that it, that it is for, and I've never seen it this way. And I know me and Marty, uh, Britt Baker had, you know, differences of opinion on that issue, but I've never seen it as we build this for this specific item that's coming. As soon as you start talking about those rates, the first thought in my mind was, how many of those are we gonna sell that are gonna be spoken for? Because that's an immediate shortage that we're going to have, and are we selling them too low? Whereas, somebody may say, hey. That ninety bucks a month sounds like a steal, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
If I'm spending, I don't, fifteen hundred dollars being, you know, having, uh, uh, an, uh, uh, um, whatever it's called. Season tickets and, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
To me, that's just part and parcel to make sure that when I get there, no different than I go to anywhere else, uh, for an entertainment venue. You know, now I go to the stadium, I go to the theater as a regular patron, that's a pretty cheap guaranteed. My ticket gets me in. But I'm like concerned that that's gonna be too few spaces sold at such a low rate, that fifty percent of it is, is going to be people buying the monthly pass.
Yeah.
And only half of that deck is actually going to be available.
Well, I mean, we sell our passes, we make it clear.
I know.
That it doesn't guarantee, I guarantee a space.
I'm out.
Doesn't. But I know exactly what you're saying. You're exactly right. There are people that buy them and still think, hey, I got a parking type permit. Pay nine dollars a month, seventy dollars a month, mother of numbers, I shall have guaranteed space, and it's not.
I'm sorry, I, I find this, guaranteed as in like it's the same spot every time, or that there's a place in the building?
There's a place in the building.
If there's a place in the best, my kind of saving.
There's a different rate for a guaranteed spot.
Right. You're paying ninety bucks, you may get there and the deck's full, sorry.
Since two thousand nine, we've sold two of those spaces.
I think it's too cheap to begin with.
I mean, it's three dollars a day. It, it boiled down to the new day.
Three dollars an hour.
Three is an hour.
No, at your proposed set monthly parking rate at ninety dollars, it ends up being three dollars a day. So you're, Kristen's exactly right. People are gonna look at that with season tickets that they paid a thousand dollars for, and they're gonna say, oh, well, I'm gonna park here every game. I'm gonna, I'm gonna spend the ninety dollar parking.
But they may or may not get a space.
I have a question. How long do you anticipate a person that comes for a game or a concert or whatever, how long do you anticipate them staying in the garage? How many hours?
I would say at least three hours.
How long do we want people to stay in our downtown? Not three hours, ten.
More than that.
We want them to stay at least nine or ten hours in order to make it, right?
That's the only thing that's realistic.
I mean, we gotta get there, something's.
We have to get there, exactly. So what I'm saying is, okay, you're gonna, they're gonna spend three dollars an hour to come to the game. They're gonna leave in four, probably, four hours. Is that going to be what you're looking for in order to make sure that we're getting our, the progress that we want to build the next parking deck? Because we want people to stay downtown, and we are, I mean, like, we're not.
That's what I'm saying, that number doesn't even get us there in five years.
That's what I mean.
Just at this starting figure.
Right. So you're making it three dollars an hour for people to stay down here for just a few hours because of the game?
Three bucks a day.
Or three dollars, I mean, okay.
That's not gonna happen.
There are people that spend sixty dollars a month for gym, don't ever go to the gym, and aren't guaranteed a treadmill when they get there, right?
It's a, apples and oranges, Kristen, apples and.
No, because what I'm saying is, individuals may pay that, because, you know what I mean, that's an interest that they may have doing at their leisure, yeah.
Okay. I hear everyone's, I hear everyone. I am only one person.
I, I, I mean, I, I understand your point. I'm, I'm sort of in favor of Councilman McIntyre's approach of gradually building up. You know, starting at a higher rate and building up. But I, I, I did not know, call it naivete. I did not know that if you bought a monthly parking spot pass, that you didn't have the opportunity to park in that deck whenever you wanted. And I think that is gonna come back.
Opportunity to park in that, but whether you actually get to park there.
Well, that's, that's what I mean. The opportunity being, I, I can drive up there and I can park, I, and I'm gonna tell you, I, I can't even imagine the hate mail that the city's gonna get.
They already do.
For every baseball fan that buys a monthly pass and shows up for a game at the last minute because they think they have a space. Despite what the fine print says. And doesn't. So I think we need to really consider the, whether or not there even should be a monthly parking pass.
So here's your next question.
At the new Hub City Park.
Are they transferable from deck to deck?
No. And here's, and here's why.
That for a fact.
And here's why. Currently, we have two parking decks. The one is four hundred and forty spaces, the other one's a, a one eighty five. If you buy a permit that goes to both, I can't really regulate this one. If they were closer in size, maybe I could. But I could sell two hundred here and think, well, I'm oversold on this one. So, so let me explain this. So a weekly report, every week I put out a report, and I've done this for years, this very conversation and, and construction method of garage, which is. The rates, or the occupancy. So the A and E garage right now has a hundred and eighty five spaces. We have two hundred and nine parking permits sold of that. We are way oversold. Industry standard would say, don't do that, obviously. But a big chunk of those are sold to Ward Beauty School, and they have students that are coming and going all the time. And so we know how that. And almost any day you go down there, there's parking passes. That one, that garage is used very differently than this garage. This one is for a lot of workers downtown. They park there all day and then they leave. A and E has a lot of transient parking that come and go. On the weekends, A and E will be full, this will be empty. They're just used, they're used very differently. And so we watch very carefully. So right now, I don't know how a hub will work. I don't know. Like we talked earlier with the events, we're still not sure how the park will affect all this, or affect the businesses. So we're taking our best guess here on our rates and how we're gonna operate.
But no matter how it works, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah.
Can we cap at least the number of monthly permits?
We can.
So we can have a set number of what?
We could.
What's left?
Are you capping it for everybody, or just for the one deck?
With that one.
I, I guess what I'm asking, I know, I know you can't really do this, but I'm just trying to figure out, like, let's say you set this cap. Does the cap apply to every property owner that has prospective interest in securing monthly parking permits at that particular deck?
Let's say somebody has an establishment there and they want ten.
Yep.
Right? And they're within the vicinity.
Yep.
But.
We'd only sell.
Let's say, let's say you're only selling a hundred and fifty total out of the three hundred and.
Three ninety eight.
Three ninety eight that's there. I'm with you, like I see those hundred and fifty going on. I'm with you. Like, I see those hundred and fifty going like that because I just think that it.
It's another reason that the monthly rate should be higher so we don't cannibalize the other ones. Cause I'm telling you, we're getting a lot of interest in the garage because it's so convenient to park there.
Well, it was the most expensive garage or, or parking lot to, to park at, you know what I mean, before we.
Do we have to start out with a monthly rate? Can we start out at an hourly, with just the hourly rate?
For three dollars a year?
Figure out over time, we've been talking about that all night tonight, figuring things out over time. Give it three months, six months and figure out how the baseball season flows and.
Whatever puts us in the black. Like, I just don't know how much clearer I could be about that.
And if, and if you look right now, we're not, we're not gonna be there in the first couple of years. Without increasing the rate and adding to our customer base. Meaning, we have one, one person who just moves from this deck to this lot. It's not gonna help us.
That doesn't change anything.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna happen.
I know.
So there's.
Seems to be different.
Here, here's how, I, I understand exactly how you look at it. It's, it's, it's a balance sheet.
It's an enterprise one.
It's an enterprise one. I get it.
I get that. We cannot give taxpayer.
But it's also a supply and demand issue. Okay? And we're trying to figure out how to create the demand. Meredith's Park is creating demand. You, that's what you talked about earlier. More things happening in specifically in downtown. The more they run, this is what Ron Young's philosophy was. The more, it's a supply and demand. The more you offer. The higher the demand. The higher the demand, the more you offer. It's an upward spike. So to Councilman McIntyre's point, if we start out at a gradual rate, maybe a two dollar rate. And I would encourage not having a monthly parking pass at the new garage yet. But start out at two dollars, look at the demand. If the demand is there, do what they do in the toll road and at the, in Montgomery County. When the demand goes up, the toll goes up. Now, I'm not saying we've punctuated, but I'm saying we look at it and say, okay. That deck's a hundred percent full, this one's fifty percent full. Let's modify the rates now. That's what I'm suggesting.
So actually, staff's recommendation is a compromise of both. We're saying start at the parking decks, do them tier one, two, three. Next year or the year after, dependent upon, right, we could pass, and I want to increase them more, two, three, four. And here's, here's the only other thing I would offer. When I go to an event or a game, I already know I'm gonna be paying for parking. And I'm paying more than six or nine dollars for parking, for one.
So to Councilmember McIntyre's point, I think maybe something we could think about it. I don't, I don't know. We said what, rowan average, we think people that are gonna go to a ballgame are gonna spend three hours, four hours, right?
Average games, two hours and forty-five minutes or whatever. So three hours will suck.
So at the end of the day, right, we didn't build the ball stadium, but at the end of the day. We, we would like this, this project to be an economic stimulator for the city, right? Right. We would like people to come and shop at the businesses while they're down there. Go get dinner, go do something else, right? So, so if we think it's gonna be three hours for the ballgame, right, nine dollars, three dollars an hour. Why don't we just on game days or concert days or event days, set a higher event, I mean, of, of.
I'm okay with that.
Rate instead of five dollars, maybe we make it seven dollars or eight dollars. And then there's that, there's no. What's the word I'm looking for? Then, then there's, uh, no rush to leave the garage, but we're still making more money to try to put it in black. But then we're not penalizing people for hanging around downtown and doing exactly what we want.
I would also be, I mean, me personally, I would be understanding and would be. Having an event rate at all of the decks when there is an event. When there's a concert downtown at, at an event rate. Not just at Hub City, but when there is an event at the Maryland Theater and it is packed. And I have to park the city garage and walk my, walk all the way. I'm just saying, like, I, we do expect to pay. Event rates for event evenings. And I'd be okay with, and I think that that's kind of a general consensus.
What is the, if that was already in that area was three dollars in parking and it was utilized. Um, I did, cause I was a mediator at court for four years. And so I sure enough didn't park up here. And cause it was cheaper and walked to district court. I parked right there because I could get out and walk directly into the courthouse. And so if it was already three dollars there when there was nothing going on. And I, I didn't, I chose, and I didn't have any money, I chose to still pay that three dollars an hour knowing I was gonna be in court. From nine AM until three PM. I still paid it.
I don't understand, I don't understand the logic of buying a parking lot for what we paid for it.
And I just don't.
That had a hundred and nineteen spaces, right?
They're about to.
That was the most heavily used parking lot in downtown, was the highest rate parking lot per hour downtown. We invest twelve million dollars.
About twelve and a half, yeah.
Into quadrupling the number of spaces and then we're gonna charge less than what we, people were already paying. On a parking lot that didn't have a twelve million dollar debt service.
And keep in mind.
Responsibility to retire.
We said we're debating whether we were gonna take off a layer, if we were gonna, like, all of those things and not. Put our artwork up there and all of that because around how much it costs. And I mean, did we, we said, we didn't wanna settle with less parking spots. Um, we got it cheaper. You know, we didn't do the, the brick, I think. We kinda, we made all these decisions to make it cheaper and still get the number of spaces. And I just think that it would be unfair to not.
What was the monthly rate at that lot before? Do we know?
It, it varied because a number of those.
Different groups had different agreements.
Exactly. In fact, part of the sale, if you recall, part of the sale of the property we bought it included a lease agreement. In which that guy's been, that guy, that organization is gonna pay, what much is it?
Twenty, remember this conversation.
Oh, twenty-five.
So, so we're, we're locked into an agreement of twenty-five dollars a month.
For how many of those spaces?
Thirty spaces. Now, they've purchased.
Three or four?
Thirty-three. They were thirty-three spaces and they, and they purchased.
They have three or four so far. But the clock's ticking on that for the next ten years. So we're gonna absorb that hit for ten years. That was part of the deal.
I remember that.
Oh, yes.
Not, not what we wanted, but it's part of the deal. And so there's.
I remember.
If they, hopefully they get to thirty-three spaces.
So the answer to your question is, they're paying twenty-five dollars a month. Because that's what they, that's what the previous owner had built into their. Calculations when they were doing their lease to their tenants and their buildings that they, that came with the lot.
There was other ones, there was other leases that weren't tenants that they had, and I don't have the. But, but right, but again, it was a surface lot.
Majority of them were their tenants.
Right. It was a surface lot, right. This is a parking garage.
The software on the, the garage, the parking software that controls the, the rates, is that something that can be updated? Across all three garages? Are they synced synced up?
Yep, we've passed that.
Yep, that's correct.
So, so, so that said, um, and I think Councilmember McIntyre mentioned this, I think we could maybe even this out, right? If we took and we did a, um, event rate higher than our five dollars, but whatever we calculate is a reasonable amount that's. Would encourage folks to stick around downtown, but still be more than five dollars. And then we did the same when we have Maryland Theater shows or we had other large events, large scale events. Every time we, we set that event rate on all the garages. And then we can do the, the one dollar, two dollar, three dollar tiered. I don't have a problem with that, but I think the. I think the issue is when there's an event and we want folks to stick around downtown. We're penalizing people for staying in the garage longer, or at least that's how it's gonna be perceived. They're gonna say, ah, I'm not paying actually three bucks. I'm gonna leave. You know, at, at least that's my, my consensus on it.
So on the operating system, we're gonna get Hub City garage up and running. Get the, the operating system, then we'll update the other two. So it'll be several months down the river for the other two garages. Right now, we can't do that. And part, part of the reason is, is because the software's been locked out. Has to do with PCI compliance. They don't want us in there. You know, tampering with it. You understand what I'm saying? So, um, which is understandable. So, so we can get the company, hubs, hub parking or, yeah, hub parking technology to do it for us. But it's, it's not simple. It's not, it's just complicated. The other thing is, again, somebody ought to tell me what an event is. Somebody's got to define that either by the number of, of who thinks coming to it. Or it's just at the, it's a certain venue or certain venues. Cause there's some venues downtown.
See, we almost think that every event at Meredith's, but every, every activity at Meredith's Park is an event.
I agree. But just at Meredith's Park?
I would, I would say.
Well, again, we, we don't decide that tonight, but I'm just saying, it's the thing I've been kinda stuck on.
What is, where is it?
What's an event?
Who's is it?
So, can we just start out with just taking it one step at a time? As you said in your introduction. This parking garage, Hub City Parking Garage was created because of Meredith's Park. I mean, they go.
That was a catalyst.
That was a catalyst. Okay. So let's just say the events are what happens at Meredith's Park. We wanna expand that to other facilities going forward. Take it one step at a time and say, okay, when they have an event at Meredith's Park. Where there are four thousand seats, we're gonna assume that everybody's gonna wanna park right there in Hub City Parking Garage.
So we're gonna charge a special event and we're gonna have to tier them, right? You wanna tier Hub, A and E, UD for special events?
He said, we can't do that right now.
He said we can't. So just, just Hub City Parking Garage, just events at Meredith's Park, like Administrator just said.
And not Maryland Theater?
No.
He did, he wasn't.
I'm saying take steps, baby steps. And just when there's an event at Meredith's Park.
It just doesn't, so that doesn't sound fair. That doesn't sound fair.
I'm not gonna penalize one event.
Yeah, that doesn't sound fair.
I would just say that if there is a certain amount of people that are attending the event, how do we know that? If the, well, I mean.
Well, for, for the Maryland Theater, they do a really good job of informing a lot of staff, not just us, but your sort of staff. They keep us on a weekly basis. And they give us a pretty good estimate of what they think's gonna attend. And so, based on pre-sales and that sort of thing. So we do have an idea at the Maryland Theater, most of the time, of how many people are gonna attend those events.
So maybe it's a theater event and the Meredith's Park. Those are, will draw, I mean.
Yes, under other venues can have a lot of people wanting.
Yeah.
And not Mary, and not the recitals, but literally like a concert or a performance. I mean, when, when Biswa did their, um, uh, play for the last two weekends, it was packed. The parking lot was full. But I would imagine both garages were quite full.
No.
The parking lot, this garage, UD back, yeah.
Yeah, this garage here. Until this all happens and then that, things will be crazy. But Maryland Theater events of. Five hundred and more, five hundred people or more, I don't know what we could say, and Meredith's Park events. And no one else, not Biswa. Not the Playhouse, not, not this, not the street festivals, none of that.
When you say not Biswa, they hold their events at the Maryland.
Well, if it's held at the Maryland Theater is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I understand, yeah. Cause they can only hold so many people.
Maryland Theater over five hundred?
Maryland Theater over five hundred people expected, guests. It seems.
So are we talking about a fifteen dollar rate, special event rate? Twelve dollars?
So.
I mean, I guess.
So if I do some rough calculations, let's say we have a twenty-year note on this deck. It's a little over eight bucks, it's a little over eight bucks a day. Eight bucks a day that every space is going to have to bring in. Every day for the next twenty years to, to cover the debt service over that twenty or two years. That's about what I get. And we're going, and we're talking about passes, well, we're beholden to one, at a fraction of that. But then the other, we're talking about passes right out of the gate at less than half of that.
Right.
So we can make all that up on the other stuff.
So according to the financial projections between the principal and the interest, we're looking at about seven hundred and seventy-five to seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. An annual debt service.
So about six dollars.
Because we're hoping that we can take it out to twenty-five.
There's, there's the option of not parking there for three dollars an hour and find another spot on the street and so there's that option.
It's not the only, only parking space. There are other options.
There are. And I know that anywhere that I go, if I wanna, if I'm going downtown Frederick, I know that I gotta park and, you know, pay. And if I'm gonna be there, I just go on and pay the whole day rate versus the, the whole hour. There's nowhere that I go that I complain. About how much it is. I mean, it's eight dollars an hour at one place, that's close to, next to market. It's like, I pull in there because I know that I'm going, you know?
So these are the current rates.
Correct.
Dollar an hour.
Yep.
No weekends.
Weekends are two hours, all weekend. It's in both.
Christmas time is the free parking.
We do the holiday free parking in the.
Thanksgiving.
So now I come down.
Eight dollar lost ticket means you lost your ticket. You don't know when they came, you don't.
That's exactly right. They hit that button and they get.
That's maximum, maximum is eight dollars.
Correct.
Daily maximum.
That's the current setup.
That is correct.
I mean, eight dollars doesn't make any sense to me. No, that's just me.
Well, it's, it's based on a dollar an hour times eight hours.
Eight dollar maximum.
Most people aren't gonna park in a garage more than eight hours. If they're working for the day, it's eight. And that's what, and that's how you calculate that typically is the eight hour. Eight hour workday, we'll call it. That's pretty standard.
Yeah, but if you have a special event rate, that's your cap. Because if I, if I'm paying, if you're saying I have to pay ten dollars for a special event, I'm gonna say I lost my ticket, I'll pay eight.
But most special events are either in the evening, when it's two dollars total, or on a weekend. Not during the weekday, when these other rates will really apply. And Sundays, Sundays are free, so if you lost your ticket.
Every, every, every day, it's two dollars?
At four, five o'clock in the evening, sorry.
Evening.
Yeah.
When, when that, at, uh, what number, five? Yeah, four PM, I'm sorry. After four PM, every day, it's two bucks.
Till six AM.
Till six AM. It's an overnight rate. At the end of this, in, in here, you see Frederick does something similar. So we've done a lot of.
But that's like for people that might live downtown, they can just park in there and just pay two dollars?
Part of it was we, yeah, it was just, so, so if you, if you worked here and you went home and you decided to come back for dinner and you park at A and E, it's gonna cost you two bucks for the evening.
It looks to be like all of that was designed based around commuter traffic. People that are working, coming to work. As opposed to.
leisure activities.
Baseball games, going out to the bar.
Right. Cause when I, when I took over parking, after five o'clock, it was free. We were only charging about thirty-three percent of the time. For parking. Weekends were free, evenings are free, holidays were free. And when I took over, like, how are we gonna build a war chest for more parking? Or for repairs if we can only charge thirty-three percent of the time? And so over time, we incorporated these other rates and so it was kind of a dollar after hours and that became two dollars an hour. And so here we are.
So, so if I park at the garage. And it's three dollars an hour, and I stay there for the eight or ten hours that we're talking about. When I leave, is it gonna cost me thirty dollars?
If we, if we go with this rate of three dollars, yes.
Unless you lose your ticket.
But I thought.
Well, we could, we could do, we could do a lot of different lost ticket prices.
No, but I thought you said that there was a max, like a, a, a max day rate of sixteen bucks or something.
Yeah. Um, we calculate daily rate, right.
Daily rate.
So all I'm saying is if, if we're trying to address both issues, instead of dealing with the event way, why don't we just have like a max? That says, listen, it's three bucks an hour, but once you get to four hours, like, and you just cap it at something, like something reasonable. I mean, it's the same idea, right?
You say, hey, you know, you can park here for that day, but it ain't gonna cost you more than X dollars. And if you lose your ticket, if you lose your ticket, you pay the day rate. So it addresses the day rate issue of losing your ticket. It addresses not having to pick which event you decide to stay, stay six or eight hours for. And it caps it and says, hey, you know, the cap for this day is X amount. And that's basically how going to DC. That's how that works.
That's probably an easier way to go about it.
You don't have to pick and choose. You say, look, it's fifteen, pick a number, fifteen bucks, twenty bucks, whatever the number is, you know.
And now you pay that for.
Yeah, I pay the, the fifteen bucks.
Would that number be different for each of the three decks if the hourly rate is different?
Sounds like it.
Yes.
I would say yes.
I'm asking you, you're.
I don't know. Yeah, I mean, make, make, yeah, make like, yeah, make one twenty and one, or make two of them twenty and one.
I don't know, yeah, I mean, make, make, yeah, make like, yeah, make one twenty and one, or make two of them twenty and one of them fifteen, I don't know, like, something that's an incentive to, to go over to the deck that you're trying to get more patrons to go to.
We can look at that.
It's just like you could set the system up easier that way.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Yeah.
I think that's a more fair option.
That makes sense.
We wanna, we wanna be able to set something that people understand too. We're always jumbling the rates and changing it.
Cause if you're there for three hours, you're going for nine bucks.
I don't care how many people.
But if you stay an extra three hours or whatever, you're at six, it isn't going to be at eighteen, you just cap it at some number, the three, like fifteen, it's okay. You know, that's the max I can expect.
Yep.
But that includes I'm gonna stay there for, you know.
So, you're saying don't, so no special event pricing?
Right, I'm saying make a max day rate, which simplifies it because then.
If they stay.
The, right, the, the, the owners is on the event goer, you know what I mean? It, it kinda gives that benefit.
Like after five hours.
Yeah, if I'm there three hours and I'm figuring, I've already paid my top rate, I'll just go do whatever.
Right, I'm not running back so I can make it twenty-seven bucks instead of thirty, you know what I mean? I've got a max number and I know that that's the number.
Right, so if it's like three, three, four hours at a ballgame, which would be nine or twelve dollars, if we said the max we're gonna charge is thirteen, then people would just go, all right, we'll pay the thirteen and stick around and.
And then they get discount drinks at Alpine Bar.
I wasn't, I wasn't.
I'm not thinking about that, don't think I'm not thinking about that. Don't think I'm not thinking about that.
So, that actually, Mr. Mish here, makes me wonder, do we, do you, I'm wondering if there's any appetite to some kind of validation for an hour or something? So, you leave the ballgame, or you leave the concert, or you leave wherever you're doing at Meredith's Park or wherever you're doing it, and you go to any of our establishments up and down the block here, um, to grab a beverage or something? Do, could we create that incentive?
If they wanna compensate us for what they're validating.
You validate, uh, uh, well, then that would be a, a negotiation.
Mm-hmm.
We do have.
You wanna do that?
I would like to negotiate with Eric.
Actually, what if. We actually have a validation system. It started with the, uh, a different program, doesn't matter, but it's a twenty percent discount is what it is. So, if it was a dollar a park, they, they would pay eighty, eighty cents, but the business picks it up, not us. We actually sell.
The business.
Fair amount of people.
Fair amount of validation, but it's mostly Biswa and government entities.
I mean, I'm seeing the ad in, in, in the line box far program that says, come to, fill in the blank, you know, get, get an hour if you're parking valid with, with every purchase or something. I'm not getting rid of the validation program.
Hmm? You don't like it?
I, I don't think that it provides any specific benefit. Trying to keep people.
Add a cap.
Oh, here comes Brittany, we got another guest.
Add a cap, I don't think it does.
I agree with you.
I will just speak briefly to this. Um, Angela has graciously attended our Main Street Business Owners meetings before, where we've discussed parking, um, and trying to explain to business owners the benefit of validations, um, in getting and increasing the foot traffic that is downtown. Do we have any that participate?
M S O is one, okay.
Yeah, M S O definitely participates, um, Maryland Theater, they, they bring in people.
Yes. So, although I also agree that it is a good idea, I am not sure that the understanding of the value is there right now. Um, I think, I think if we can fill these businesses post-game or pre-game, and that the business owners can feel that difference in their place of business, I think then we re-approach that conversation regarding validation, maybe six months in or a year in if we are getting that foot traffic, but we do not have many participate, and we have explained to them many a times.
I just don't understand, like, the attempt to want to complicate, to me, what is a pretty simple process. I come downtown, I go into the parking deck, I pay the amount, I leave, you know what I mean? No differently than I go here and I, I, okay, the meters.
That's the leaving part.
I, I, I've put in the meter what the meter is, you know?
Well, the validation, the benefit of the validation is when the business validates it, you, when you walk in, they can validate it right then and there. And then whenever you leave, you present your ticket at the gate, it opens. And that's when it calculates the charges, and then we charge that business, and at the end of the month, we send a bill for all their validation.
Well, that's, that's.
It actually.
Don't take the business.
It just seems odd.
There's just not enough, there's just not enough foot traffic for the business to.
The city absorbs the twenty percent.
I withdraw my suggestion. We'll come back in six months.
When, when jurors are there, when jurors come in, they're all validations.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, through the court.
Yep.
They have a validation machine set up and.
We just, I actually just started that.
Is, is there any opportunity?
Well, you're being compelled to at that point.
Yeah.
Is there any opportunity with the garage to prepay, like, when I go to an ads game and I wanna park in a deck and I pay thirty bucks?
Please say yes.
And they use Parking Spot or something like that?
We're not there yet.
Okay, I just. Where is this new software allowed to do that?
I'm not sure how complicated our software is.
Yeah.
Um, we're still learning, we're, we're small. We're a few people, you know, like every park, we're just.
Well, it's like through, like you use Parking Spot or something, and your Spot Hero or whatever it is.
Yeah, there's a lot of garages.
And then you just put it up to a scanner and it.
There's a lot of garages that are gateless and they, they get by your license plate.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't know if the new software, if the new, this new version had.
We could, but we're not going to for a number of reasons.
Yeah.
A lot of it just has to do with operations. It's, it's very, it's all complicated, and it all costs money for that hardware. I.
I'm letting you go.
I know we had late in the night here, and we still have a ways to go.
We do.
And I know you have other things to talk about. So, do you wanna continue with this, or do you want us to come back so you can move on to some other things?
So, yeah, it is six thirty, we have two more things on the agenda, and then we have a regular session that starts at seven.
Do we decide anything?
We have it.
Can we come, can we come back next weekend?
I have, I don't have, like, the group has.
I mean, I have two, which is.
I'm just trying to simplify this process. You come down, you pay for parking and you.
Well, I think everybody kinda liked what Kristen was talking, or what Congressman Alshire was talking about.
A max. Keep it at three and then set a max. So.
I agree with that approach.
To that garage, to that garage. Three and the max.
Are, are you also thinking of selling note permits in this garage at first?
I would encourage not, just because of the contention it's gonna create on ballgame days. At least at first, see how it goes, that's my suggestion.
But during the week?
Well, most of the ballgames are in the evening.
Yeah, but you don't.
And not everybody working downtown.
We're working, stay.
But you don't, you don't tell people, you don't tell people when they can or cannot use their pass.
Sure we can.
Well, no, they've been looking at data for a long time.
Can I ask this?
There's no spaces, we say there's no spaces. It doesn't happen very often. You, you can't, if you're selling a pass to a business, a person that's working in a business.
They use it all week long.
And you say, you, you can't say to them, you can't use it on game night.
I, we wouldn't.
No.
And that's why I'm saying there's an issue.
Yeah.
Because people that are gonna buy, buy passes in these garages are the season ticket holders. And if the garage is full, they're not gonna be able to park.
I see no economic development here, but I am pretty sure the tenants of the B building would wanna buy passes.
I guess that's, and I was gonna, my, my question is that, is, is there a way that we can say, you know, we're gonna sell passes to this deck for is for, uh, businesses that have employees? You know, and just set a number, whatever that is. A hundred and fifty spaces worth of passes, but it's gonna be for the businesses. Are you incorporating what?
Well.
That you just said?
Yes.
Just talking about tenants, residents.
We might have to come back.
Yes.
We might have to come back.
How about you all, how about you all just percolate that?
Yeah.
And then we come back next week, and then we take five minutes and, and.
Five.
Maybe five minutes.
We filled the ways to go.
Get her done. Twenty-five minutes.
This is, this is friendlier this time than it was a few years ago.
Yeah, cause you're, yeah. I can see Eric starting to tick, he's starting to a little tick.
Yeah.
It was awful.
We'll bring it back.
I didn't stop you. I trust you guys, that you guys watch the data, you look at the numbers, you know what you're talking about.
Everything that's up here on the, on the PowerPoint is in your memo, if you have any questions, you can certainly ask me, but we'll come back whenever you want me to come back.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm almost scared.
Thank you.
Uh-oh.
Nancy.
Water, wastewater rate model update. Nancy, utili, Director of Utilities Tyler and Ashley Newcomer.
Oh, my gosh.
It's not gonna be that.
This conversation's there.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, the.
I was supposed to bring chicken.
Don't worry about it.
Do you wanna come sit with us?
This is you.
That water.
My goal is to do this in ten minutes or less.
Oh, you hear that, Nancy, it's ten minutes or less.
Ten minutes or less.
You want us to come sit in the turntable seats?
So, um, I was going to start with water, but I'm just going to ask a wastewater question. Um, when we met the last time, everybody was on board with, um, the wastewater and the thirteen percent increase for twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven. Are we still good with wastewater, cause I need to do the ordinances?
So, I wasn't on board. I certainly received the presentation that you provided.
I thought we were okay with wastewater.
But I was not on board with the, the rate adjustments as proposed.
Okay.
Um, without the explanation of what they cover.
Okay, um, the, for, what the rates cover for water and wastewater are a combination of two things. Um, our annual operate, our annual operating cost as well as, um, a portion of the cash funded, um, capital improvement plan, our capital improvement cost. Um, our benefit fees, uh, are also used, um, to fund a portion of our capital projects. The rates, uh, both for water and wastewater that were proposed, will actually, um, if you will, spend down some of our cash reserve, um, while we're, uh, cash funding, um, mostly engineering services for the capital projects that we, that we have on our priority list. Um, but we'll maintain six months of operating cash, but the, um, the rates will fund those two things. Um, they're, you know, we're not set up to make profits, so they, they literally, they cover operating and capital. Operating and cash capital as well as, part of our operating, remember, is debt service. So, any debt service that we occur, incur, our operating budget, um, includes that debt service. So, um, and like I said, for the wastewater, um, we were looking at a thirteen percent rate increase for three consecutive.
Can you? Just for the public's benefit, can we use the dollar figures instead of the percents? Because everybody hears thirteen percent a year and nobody has any idea what thirteen percent means.
Sure, um.
And that's all that, that'll be reported then?
The, well, I wanna, um, the thirteen percent, I'm gonna just touch base on, on the rate increase. Um, there's a difference between a rate increase and a revenue increase. So, the thirteen percent rate increase on wastewater is approximately nine point five percent revenue increase. If you, um, are a quarterly customer, well, if we go to the projected wastewater inside fees, current rate design, which is page eighteen, um, in the packet that, um, starts with operating fund balance wastewater.
Just.
Yes. You'll see that in F Y twenty-four, for somebody that has a residential customer that has a five inch or three quarter inch meter, their current bill, um, that current fee is twenty-four ninety. Um, you go to twenty-eight fifteen.
Hold on. So, the average customer in the city is currently paying about twenty-five bucks every three months for sewer, right?
This is the fixed fee.
Yep.
Okay.
That's the fixed part.
And then you're, you have your quarterly fees, um. You have your quarterly fees, and actually, if you go back, just flip back, um, we put the comparison in here as well. Actually, I think the comparison is in the water. We put the comparison for in the water that has water and wastewater. So, if you go to page twenty-five and you look at the bill comparison, um, you'll see.
Where am I going?
Page twenty-five in the water packet.
Okay.
So, you have the, um, and this says residential alt, but remember, sewer does not change. The only mod, the only alternative we'll look at is water. So, a quarterly wa, uh, wastewater bill in F Y twenty-four for fixed fee and, um, usage fees, a hundred and six dollars and eighty-five cents. This is using thirteen thousand five hundred gallons.
Which is the average.
Which is the average. In F Y twenty-five, that same customer, thirteen thousand five hundred gallons, will go from a hundred and six eighty-five to a hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-five cents.
Okay, so for the average person out there listening, the impact to your household budget on the sewer portion, that thirteen percent equates to about four bucks a month, right? I just think that that's the best way.
It is.
A rate payer can hear the information.
It's a hundred and six to a hundred and twenty.
Which is still lower by far than any other jurisdiction in the land around us.
Correct.
Like, I just think that, that's.
Yes, and if you're an outside customer, outside residential customer, um, F Y twenty-four, one seventy-eight sixteen, and, um, the F Y twenty-five rate for the outside residential customer goes from, I'm gonna say roughly a hundred and eighty to two hundred. So, approximately twenty bucks a quarter for wastewater for outside.
So, if you live outside of the city, you can expect an extra amount of about six dollars and fifty cents a month on your sewer bill.
Yep, fourteen, about fourteen on, on inside and about twenty on the outside.
Yes.
Um, and like I said, um, that rate increase of thirteen percent is actually nine point five increase in rev, nine, nine point five increase in revenue. The reason for that is a joint service area, um, the Morgansville customers that we will be losing.
Five and twelve. Five and twelve seventeen, okay.
And, um, and like, a hundred percent of the, um, revenue, the rate, a hundred percent of those increases will cover our operating costs to include debt service and our cap, cash funded capital. The other funding source for cash funded capital is our allocation or benefit fees. And if you, um, you know, look at the chart on the first page, you'll see that we're not building cash. We're actually spending ca, we're actually spending cash down, so we're using a part of our reserves. So, if we were to maintain our current cash level, um, we would be talking about a much higher number.
Yikes.
Okay.
So.
So, for the average in-city customer, your bill's going up about five bucks a month?
Yes.
Combined, water and sewer. So, when you see your bill after the new fiscal year, if you see a bump, a good bit of that bump is probably gonna be on the trash side, not on the water and sewer side. Because most people don't look at all the, the individual items, so it's just important to point that out. You know, the trash is going to be the bigger part of that bump or increase, uh, you know, which is a contractual service. If you're outside of the city, you can expect to see, what is that? That's, that's twenty and eleven, that's thirty-one bucks, so about ten bucks a month, right? So, about five bucks inside the city, about ten bucks outside of the city.
Correct.
If you're a wholesale customer in one of the other towns, which we sell water to, which is Smithburg, Funkstown and Williamsport, it's about fifty cents more per thousand gallons.
Correct.
Change, right?
Mm-hmm.
We don't dictate what that specific town sells you the water per thousand gallons for or what their base rate is, but what our charge is going to be is about fifty cents more per thousand gallons.
That's correct.
Right.
Mm-hmm, so.
Thirteen, three, seven bucks.
Um, so.
Our impact is seven bucks.
So, in the, on the wastewater, um, we have to do our public hearing, um, I believe it's on May fifth, first meeting in May.
Seventh.
Or second.
Seventh.
May seventh, I'm sorry. So, we have to do the public hearing for the rates. Um, so if, if you're comfortable with the wastewater rate, I, I'll move over to the water because we. I'll move over to the water because we talked about the non-residential and looking at eliminating the two t- the declining tier system. And that's, um, that's what a primary, what we primarily wanted to, to talk about was that declining tier. But I, you know, I need to kind of have a nod on the wastewater so I can get those ordinances going.
I just wanted clarification that the reason for the increase in the wastewater side is to cover primarily the capital improvements we're going to be required to make on the wastewater side.
Yes.
Those are ones that are programmed and required, things we're actually going to completely do.
And in our CIP, that includes the sixty-five million dollar project, um, that the mayor and council, uh, actually, um, in May, probably in May, will be bringing Black and Beach proposal, um, to begin that P E, for the P E R, the, um, engineering, preliminary engineering review. Um, so that, that's the primary capital project we're looking at there. So, on the water side, if you go to the first page, um, I took about a half a million data points and created this simple chart. And, um, one of the things I wanted to emphasize when we go through this chart is we have thirty thousand accounts roughly, almost thirty-one thousand accounts. When we look at, um, non-residential, I was looking at about twenty-seven hundred accounts out of that thirty-one, thirty, almost thirty-one thousand accounts. So, um, you know, important to note, um, the number accounts. So, once again, I'm gonna talk about, um, rate increase versus realized revenue. On the water, we were looking at a fourteen percent rate increase. The overall realized revenue will be about twelve point two to twelve point four percent depending on usage. So, um, the other thing I want to mention before I get into the chart, you know, there's almost always a breakpoint when you're looking at rates. Looking at, um, non-residential customers, the, the breakpoint in FY twenty-five is about fifty-five hundred gallons per day. So, um, a rest, you know, like a fast food restaurant, something like that, um, a lot of times, well, one of the larger ones or busier ones will see in that category. So, we looked at the very, um, I also want to note that, um, when we look at the non-residential, we're looking at commercial, industrial, public authority, residential multi, residential commercial. Residential, commercial, rental, residential, multi are in a declining tier. We're also looking at wholesale, but wholesale has a sixteen percent discount on top of that rate. So, that's the customer classes we're looking at. So, in FY twenty-five, um, looking at those twenty-seven hundred accounts, the two-tier system, we would see about a twelve point, in, the first row of accounts is inside, the second is outside, and the third is wholesale. Across the board, using the two-tier, we would see, at a fourteen percent rate increase, we would see roughly a twelve point one to twelve point three revenue increase. Um, if we go to the one-tier system and we look at how it impacts the customer classes, that fifty-five hundred gallons being the breakpoint, some customers at a fourteen percent rate increase because of the volume of water they use, it'll result in a revenue increase of about fifteen point nine percent for that customer. It's where their water, where the bulk of their water's being charged now versus being charged in one tier. Um, what I did, if you move on, I added twenty, FY twenty-six and FY twenty-seven because FY twenty-five, when you change rates, is a correction year. You'll see that when we go to twenty-six and twenty-seven, we're back at the twelve point three, give, twelve point three, twelve point four across all customer classes in non-residential categories. So, we have a little bit of a correction. And, um, the other thing I want to point out is of those twenty-seven hundred accounts, um, where we see this, where we're seeing this variation, only forty-five accounts of two point four percent will feel like that reven- that that rate increase is higher because of where, because of the amount of revenue that's going to be generated. On the outside customers, it's fourteen customers out of those twenty-seven hundred. I also included, um, the maximum monthly increase for the customer who uses the most amount of water in this category is about two hundred and, um, on insides, about two hundred and fifteen dollars a month or twenty-five hundred dollars a year. Outside, it's about three thousand dollars a month or thirty-five thou- thirty, just under thirty-six thousand a year. Um, and then, of course, the water companies, uh, you know who, who those customers are. So, if you flip the page, this next page is the list of forty-five inside customers in order of most-used water to least-used water that represents, like I said, represents those forty-five customers. So, the first customer on the list is the one that will see the, the maximum increase for inside monthly, commercial, industrial, public authority. The, um, inside monthly residential multi, in the next block down, the first customer is the one that represents the max on the list. And of course, the last customer on each of those lists represents the minimum. And then the inside quarterly, commercial, industrial, public authority, there's five customers there and you can see who those customers are. I will note in that, the city of Hagerstown Golf Course is the top customer on that list that will see that increase. Um, if you flip the page, the outside customers are there, highest user to lowest user per category, uh, to include wholesale. I will point out that, um, res- quarterly residential multi, um, in both inside and outside, have zero customers. Um, that, you know, on this list, looking at, okay, who's, the revenue that's gonna be generated at the fourteen percent, or fourteen percent increase, that where those correction factors are going to apply, there's no RM quarterlies for anybody. And I know that's a lot to digest, um, so, and I. A lot to digest, but, you know, in, very simplistically, if you stay with the two-tier system that we have now, you're gonna see a roughly, uh, twelve point two average revenue increase on a fourteen percent. Um, straightforward, easy to calculate. If we go to the one-tier system, FY twenty-five will be a little bit of a cor- uh, um, correction year. We'll see slightly less revenue for these twenty-seven hundred customers. But, you know, we have thirty-one thousand, so I, I'm not, I'm not even sure that the revenue, that amount of revenue will even be really noticeable, be a very small percentage, looking at the, over the thirty thousand customers that we have.
I'm trying to follow this. So, fifty-five hundred gallons a day works out to a little over half a million gallons per quarter, which is over the hundred thousand gallon level differentiation.
Part of, it's because it was falling into tiers. So, you, it's where that breakpoint is, that averages out those two tiers, um, looking at when you're calculating that bill.
I'm just not clear how the revenue can, would possibly decrease when you're talking about getting, what, what, if, because removing the level, second level, is removing the lower of the two rates under non-residential.
It's, it's taking.
Removing, basically, the discussion was removing level two and just using non-residential level, level one rates, regardless of the number of gallons. And if you're, because, so I don't understand how by charging more, we're gonna have less revenue.
You, you have to, um, in order to maintain the integrity of the model, if you move back to the, um, the alternate rate design on page twelve, um, you'll see that the FY twenty-four is a dollar eighty-seven and a dollar sixty-seven. And so, um, the FY twenty-five rate for the, for combining those two rates is a dollar ninety-nine. So, you have to get to that breakpoint, um, between the two rates. You, you can't just choose the higher of the two, you have to, um, look at it holistically.
Why?
In order to maintain the integrity of the model.
I don't understand. So, you're still going, so you're still suggesting that we charge non-residential less than we charge residential?
The, um. This is, yes, this is what, when we worked, well, we didn't want to get rid of the inclining tier on, um, we didn't want to get rid of the inclining tier on residential because the second tier is for what is considered a conservation tier. So, in order to collect, um, the revenue consistent for that group of customers, the percentage of the revenue for that group of customers, this is the rates. Residential makes up a certain percentage of, uh, the usage, and so a certain percentage of the revenue comes from that customer class.
So, I'm confused because I see two numbers here on page twelve. I see a number that says a dollar sixty-seven and a number that says a dollar eighty-seven. And every, and every number after that in the tier system is, or in, in the year system is the same.
That's the alternate rate design where you have one tier.
Because.
If you go up to page, um, we're on inside, if you look at page nine, you'll see the two-tier system.
Yeah. The discussion before was just to use the level one rates.
If.
Across the board, regardless of the amount.
I don't know that I, based on the conversations we've had with our rate consultants, um, you would just, you can't charge your one customer class more than the pers- it, the percentage of water, if you will, that, that group uses. So, the revenue that you co- collect for non-residential is based on the bill, the volume of billed water for that non-residential. So, if you say, I'm just going to, um, get rid of level two and I'm gonna set everybody at this level one rate, then you are going to charge that group of customers more pour, more per thousand gallon of water based on.
Volume.
Based on the volume of total water.
They use more, so they pay more.
Yeah, but, but, but then, if you do that and you don't lower the inside rates, then the revenue you're going to collect is, is going to be higher, they're gonna be paying.
Okay, right, so let me ask this question. Let's say at my house, for a particular quarter, I decided to use a hundred and one thousand gallons of water, right? I'm gonna pay that higher rate, right?
If we have the two-tier, yeah.
Which is the, so what would I pay? I would pay the one eighty-seven, right?
Yeah, it's, um.
And, and then I'm gonna pay the three fifty-seven, right? I just want to make sure I understand this correctly, because, because maybe I'm, I'm misunderstanding.
Yes, if you're a residential customer.
So, the buck eighty-seven for the first eighteen, it comes to like thirty-two dollars or something, right?
And then you're gonna pay.
And then, for the next, for the next.
Everything above the two thousand.
Eighty-two, eighty-three thousand gallons, I'm gonna pay three fifty-seven, right? So, that's another, so what is that?
Yeah, if you're.
It's another two hundred and fifty dollars?
Yeah, it'd be three fifty-seven.
Am I doing the math wrong?
Per thousand. Yeah, a residential customer, if a residential customer, if it's a hundred thousand gallons, the first eighteen thousand would be in tier one.
Right.
Just round up the.
Okay.
And, uh.
So, so me as a residential customer, if I decided to use that hundred and one thousand gallons in that particular quarter, I'm gonna pay a buck eighty-seven for the first eighteen, I'm gonna pay three fifty-seven for every thousand gallons after that. So, my bill's gonna be thirty-two bucks plus, I hope I'm doing the math right.
Plus three fifty-seven.
No, eighty thousand.
Well, you're not.
Eighty times thirty-five.
Well, the hundred thousand is the non-residential.
No, 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 level two, over eighteen thousand gallons residential, I'm paying three fifty-seven per thousand gallons. So, once I get above eighteen, I'm paying three fifty-seven a thousand gallons, right?
Yeah, you have eighty.
Oh, I see.
So, but the commercial person who uses that same hundred and one thousand gallons that particular quarter, their bill, maybe I'm, I'm misunderstanding, may- maybe it's in the base rate or something, but they're gonna pay the same thirty-two bucks, but then, once they hit that, that, well, they're gonna pay thirty-two a- all the way up. So, their bill's gonna be like a third of mine? No, that's not right.
So, if, so if there's a hundred thousand dollars.
Is that correct?
Yeah, so, if they're a non-residential, it would be one point eight seven times, um, one hundred. Um, and it'd be a hundred and eighty-seven dollars where a residential customer.
That's what we said last time, just get rid of level two and just have the reach for levels.
The other one for just water would be three twenty-six versus one eighty-seven.
I don't understand why they just can't pay more.
So, even with level one of non-residential, it's, I, maybe I'm looking at, it's exponentially cheaper?
The number of customers in residential far exceeds.
Oh, I got that, I got that part.
So, you look at the volume of water that those residential customers are, and then the percentage of the revenue that those residential customers, um, uh, would provide, that would, they would provide, they would, you know, their share of the cost. Um, and so, when we, when we run the model, that's what we're looking at, is residential's going to make up, you know, X percentage because they're X percentage of the usage.
I get that, but the reality is, within your utility system, about seventy percent of the costs are fixed costs. Right out of the gate, based on this chart, I'm paying a fixed cost, that seventy percent fixed cost, for the first eighteen thousand gallons, and then paying three times that for the fixed costs, for the amount that the commercial customer is paying that fixed cost at a third of that rate. In other words, they're paying less for that seventy percent of the fixed costs than what the residential customer is paying, regardless of the fact that there's more residential customers. Whether I'm commercial or residential, if I shut off my tap tomorrow and they shut off their tap tomorrow, seventy percent of the costs are still fixed.
So.
It isn't as if, it isn't as if, the differential should really be in that overage, which, they're getting sort of a credit on the overage for another eighty-two thousand gallons above what the residential customer is getting on that fixed cost right out of the gate. That seems odd to me.
Um, this, this is a rate design that's been, as you well know, that's been in effect since two thousand and five. The, if there's a desire, we can go with the same philosophy that's used in wastewater, which is a unit cost per thousand gallons, regardless of customer type, with, um, an outside differential applied, outside customer and joint service. And every customer pays the same cost per thousand gallons on wastewater. Um, for all inside customers pay the same cost, outside customers, um, the differential is applied. It's about a one point six differential on the outside customers on wastewater, but it's a one-tier system across the board. And we can certainly do that and, um.
Well, I think some of the difficulty for me is, we're facing, you know, again, I go back to, there was a time of day when we were selling six to eight million gallons of water, right, on a fifteen point eight million gallon system. We're not doing that anymore, we're selling eleven or twelve million gallons of water on a fifteen point eight. And I'm trying to be conservative on the numbers. Um, and, and the reality is, by a declining rate scale, as we approach that, that, that sort of ceiling, and the realities of adjusting the rates to account for the two hundred million dollar worth of improvements we want to make over, over, over the next period of time, there's no incentive in this rate structure for the non-residential customer using large volumes of water, as Peter points out, um, to want to find or identify, um, water-saving mechanisms within their operations. You know what I mean, to lower that and, and sort of buy us time. No differently than when Potomac Edison, First Energy, you know, looked at the, the size of lines that had to ran across the Potomac River ten years ago and said, hey, if everybody just starts putting in much more energy-efficient light bulbs, it actually saves us more money as a company to not have to do all of those improvements by shelling out the light bulbs than it does to invest in those improvements and keep selling more electric, going further into the hole on that debt service, uh, process.
To give it another analogy, conversation we had about a half an hour ago about building the fourth deck, that's what, that's how I look at these rates. These rates are not only paying for what we have and what we need to do, but what we will be doing. but what we will be doing going forward to go from a fifteen-million-gallon-per-day system to a twenty, twenty-five, thirty-million-gallon-per-day system, which ultimately, this greater region, maybe not in my lifetime, but in this greater region's going to need. So, I, I, I understand what you're saying, Nancy, that there's a model. I'm saying that the model needs to consider future investments, and that's why the simplest thing, what I was looking at, was just delete level-two and use the numbers from level-one, not re-massaging the numbers, just using those numbers. Revenue increases, funds available for improvements and expansion increase, and we're helping everybody in the entire area. That's, that's the really simplistic way that I look at it.
So, um, I'm just going to ask a couple, um, probably two questions. Uh, the first question is on the residential, which makes up the bulk of our customer base. We've always had the inclining tier to encourage conservation. Um, we sell one E, we sell one EDU to each residential customer. Anything above eighteen thousand gallons exceeds that EDU. So, do you want to keep the inclining tier on residential?
Yeah, I mean, as, as a person with a family of seven who clearly doesn't use thirteen, I understand and accept that the more I use is a greater tax on the system for you to provide that water than a person in a two-person household. You know what I mean, because we should be paying about what that seventy percent fixed cost is equally, and then above that is where you've got to work the system harder to provide more water, and I see that the same on the non-residential side.
Well, the philosophy of using water in a residence is different from the philosophy of using water in a business, especially in manufacturing or...
You should tell my kids that.
So, my second question is this, do you want us to go back and update the model using the, the level-one rates, um, that were part of the original rate design to determine what percent rate increase that will be on that customer classification? It will be more than fourteen percent.
For non-residential.
For non-residential.
I thought it was understood last time that it would be not more than fourteen percent, but, yeah.
No, we...
Yes, I mean, I'm saying this.
Um...
Yes.
Yes.
Donna, I have to ask you a question because when we did the advertisement, it was for fourteen on water and thirteen on wastewater. So, depending on what this is, we'll have to re-advertise for a pub, do we have to re-advertise for a public hearing?
That would be a question I'd ask Councilwoman as well, Legal Council.
Legal Council, okay.
I mean, that's you, Lyric.
Yes, it's her.
Even at the end of the day, if we have to concede that, at the end of the day, like, I feel like we should be working toward that. Even if at the end of the day you said, "You know what, we are too close to, to, to the hour of adoption," then, then I would accept that as long as there was an understanding that, you know, the direction has to be different.
Well, well, um...
So, how often can this happen?
The rate model?
Mm-hmm.
It can happen every year. We typically have done...
How, how, how more frequently than a year can this happen?
We typically set the rates for a year. We, we build our, our budget and everything based on that year. I will get with, uh, New Gen this evening, I'll reach out to Mike this evening, and, um, we will have to have a meeting next week along with Eric.
Okay.
Um, you know, we're moving. So, Jim is out there talking to Jason.
I'm sorry.
Do we want to, we still haven't, I'm sorry, y'all, y'all are not done.
I don't think we're going to, I don't think we're going to change how we're all sitting here.
Really?
I mean, we would have to hurry up and shift around, man, we don't have time.
You don't have to change, I have the time.
As long as we're not taking a long break, I'm okay with it either way.
Yeah, we are, no. All right, so, uh, next is the Cultural Trail Crosswalk at Baltimore Street, Jim Bender, our city engineer.
So, I've been up here a couple of times before, I think everyone's aware of the, the issue. There is, there is not a good, um, place for a crosswalk, um, between Summit Avenue and Potomac Street, but I just feel that the reality is, when the stadium opens, people coming up the Cultural Trail from the south are going to get to Baltimore Street, and they're going to cross the street whether there's a crosswalk there or not. And I think that the better course of action is to provide some sort of a crosswalk, even if it's a temporary crosswalk that we refine and, um, try to optimize at some point in the future. I just don't feel comfortable not having some sort of a crosswalk there. And so, that's really, I guess, at least looking for, um, I guess, a nod at the head at this point. And we have basically ten days until the, the stadium opens. And I need, I would need time for a contractor to do something even temporarily at this point.
So, what are you asking?
Well, we looked at it in the field together la- last week?
Yeah.
Last week, and I'll tell you the same thing now that I said then, I don't have any issue with you putting a temporary crosswalk in there because I think, like a number of other items, you're going to end up seeing what the, the pedestrians do.
Yeah.
Because I didn't understand it until we were out there last week that this alley right here, which is only about thirty feet from this crosswalk, goes both directions still, both in and out. I just, and...
So, it's not one way. We did, we talked about that.
I, I know, but I didn't understand it until I was there last week and saw one car trying to go in as another car was trying to go out. And so, a car has to back out onto the street for that car to come through. Like, to actually visually see that.
We discussed here, I don't know that there was any consensus or even a question, but making that alley one-way at some point. I don't know what the process is to get from point A to point B, but...
Right, and that's something that we would have to study because there are certain properties that you rely on that for access. And we would need to make sure that changing it to one-way would still work for those properties.
Well, both, both streets on both ends are two-way streets.
It was the church we were moving to, right?
You just come the other way.
I mean, um...
And, and we'll still have all the signage that we can, right?
We're going to try to, we're going to try to get as much as we can.
Well, I think it's like you said, people are going to cross wherever they want to cross. And to me, it's like Burhans Boulevard, you know, where seven-hundred-and-fifty people cross that street to buy a stop-go, et cetera, every day wherever they decide to cross. I would like to see, you know, if you put a temporary crosswalk there, you've covered your base, but then you get to see through a couple of games, okay, this is what's actually happening. And then you can, you know...
Can you define temporary for me, please?
Well, it wouldn't be the permanent installation.
In days?
I, I would say it's going to be at least until the middle of May, when they, when they do, when the stadium opens up to full capacity. Um, and it may be, it may be a week or two after that, just to get enough, gather enough evidence.
Ninety, ninety days would be enough to figure out a better plan.
I think we're going to know in thirty days.
I agree. So, we'll see you back in June.
Okay, more than likely.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, sir.
We'll do, we'll do, uh, closing comments at the end of the regular session. We'll take a quick, just a quick recess and come right back in.
Are we setting up here or are we moving?
No. We are, we are going up there. They're going to, they're going to switch.
Welcome to the April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four regular session for the mayor and city council for the city of Heggers Town. This meeting is now called to order. First up, we'll have invocation given by councilmember Schindler and followed directly by that the pledge of allegiance. So please stand.
Esteemed mayor and council, devoted public servants and fellow citizens. As we come together in service to our remarkable city, let us invoke the spirit of dedication and spared shared responsibility. May our actions and decisions be guided by a profound sense of service that we owe to the residents we represent. In the spirit of selflessness, let us transcend individual interests to collectively foster a community that thrives on the principles of compassion, inclusivity, and support. Together, let us strive to leave a lasting legacy of positive change, knowing that our collective service is the driving force behind growth and prosperity of Heggers Town. May our deliberations today be marked by a genuine commitment to the welfare of our community, fostering a spirit of unity and cooperation. Thank you, and as we deliberate today, may we be reminded of the profound impact our decisions have on the lives of those we serve.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So announcements, rules of procedure effective December fifteenth, twenty twenty. Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedule for May is as follows. Tuesday, May seventh, we have a work session at four thirty P M. Tuesday, May seventh, we have a public hearing at seven P M. for physical year tax rate and physical year budget, wastewater and wastewater rates. Tuesday, May fourteenth, primary election day, there's no meeting scheduled. Tuesday, May twenty-first, work session at four P M. And then Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, a regular session at seven P M. And I have appointments. Do I have to do each one for a code of appeals and zoning differently?
Call and make a motion.
Okay, have a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve, make an appointment for the Board of Code Appeals for Kid Dietrich, term to expire May first, two thousand twenty-eight. Gordon Poffenberger, term to expire June first, two thousand twenty-eight. To the Board of Zoning Appeals, Laura Lowry, the term to expire March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. Erin Smith, the term to expire May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. And to the Planning Commission, Tamara Martinez, term to expire May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-nine.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. So Board of Code Appeals, swear and protest, we're here together. Kid and Dietrich and Gordon Poffenberger.
Those are the ones that are here.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Did I say that correctly?
You did.
Former fire.
Let's get right, give you this. Raise your right hand for me. I get Dietrich.
I get Dietrich.
Do you swear?
Do you swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland?
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Heggers Town?
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Heggers Town.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of?
Execute the office of?
Board of Code Appeals.
Board of Code Appeals.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And can you please sign the book right here?
Former Fire Chief, Kid Dietrich.
Yeah, yes.
I thought so. I'm like, wait, he looks familiar.
Heck, yeah.
This is serious, gee. And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Yes, picture.
I'll get your book.
Okay.
So ready?
Somebody down here smiles. Okay, here again. One, two, three. Okay, thank you.
And I'm Mr. Aaron Smith for Board of Zoning Appeals. Hi, Mr. Smith. Can you raise your right hand for me? Aye, Aaron Smith.
Aye, Aaron Smith.
Do you swear?
Do you swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance?
And that I will be faithful, or faithful and bear true allegiance?
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Heggers Town?
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Heggers Town.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of?
Execute the office of?
Board of Zoning Appeals.
Board of Zoning Appeals.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state. Thank you.
Can you sign right here for me? Right here by your name. We need a picture. Mrs. Martinez? Good to see you. I mean, it is Tamara and Tekeisha. Tamara and Tekeisha Martinez. I mean, the hair, it all.
I know, right? I mean, all the time.
Matter of fact, I'm gonna start acting like I'm not me.
My sister's problem is she was being right. She said someone said they were going to be your sister.
I, Tamara Martinez? Do you swear? That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance?
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance?
To the state of Maryland?
The state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Heggers Town?
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Heggers Town.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of?
Execute the office of?
Swear you're into something. Heggers Town Planning Commission.
Heggers Town Planning Commission.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Congratulations. Thank you for your service. Now we'll take a picture together, two of us. I mean, I'm gonna start acting like you. I'm gonna stay here. Because I have a special recognition. For Mr. Jeff Ridgeway. Mr. Ridgeway, would you join me up front, please? Wow. How you doing?
I'm doing well, thank you.
I'm gonna read this.
Okay.
All right, this is what you came for, right?
That's indeed.
All right. So a special recognition presented to Mr. Jeff Ridgeway. Whereas, the city of Heggers Town recognizes the profound impact libraries and librarians have had on the intellectual and emotional development of our community's children. And whereas, for over four decades, one individual has dedicated their career to fostering a love of reading and learning among our young citizens. And whereas, this individual, Mr. Jeff Ridgeway, or Mr. Jeff, as he is more widely known, has served as a beacon of knowledge, compassion, and inspiration as a beloved children's librarian at the Washington County Free Library. And whereas, throughout his forty-two years of service, Mr. Jeff's kindness and calming presence have created a welcoming and inclusive environment for children of all backgrounds to explore the vast wonders of literature. And his personalized book recommendations open the door for many to become lifelong readers. And whereas, Mr. Jeff has enriched the lives of generations by helping to create initiatives like Books for Babies, which presents a new book to the parents of every child born at Meredith's Hospital to encourage reading aloud as early as possible and has provided families with over thirty-nine thousand books to date. And whereas, I mean, you've four decades. They gotta cover it all.
You got a worksheet.
Mr. Jeff has sung songs, presented puppet shows, read and told stories to countless children while visiting Head Start, the Judy Center preschool daycare programs throughout the community during community events and at library store times. And whereas, Mr. Jeff has left a mark on the fabric of our community instilling in each child the belief they can achieve anything they set their minds to through programs like the Battle of Books, a program for students age four to six, now is in its thirty-seventh year. And whereas, as Jeff embarks on a well-deserved retirement to tend to his growing flock of chickens and spend time visiting his daughters, we take this opportunity to express our deepest gratitude for his unwavering commitment to the betterment of our community. Now therefore, be proclaimed by the city of Heggers Town on May seventh, twenty twenty-four, that we hereby honor and celebrate the remarkable career of Mr. Jeff Ridgeway, recognizing his immeasurable contributions to the intellectual and emotional growth of our community. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that I think the community of Washington County has given me back a lot more than I gave. It's been my pleasure to serve the children by going to these low-income Head Starts and fostering reading among kids that probably don't get read to at home as much as they should. So it's been my pleasure to do that. It's been my pleasure to work with the staff of the library. They're wonderful. And it's been my pleasure to work with the city of Heggers Town. So I've done a lot of the park events, like the Parks and Rec Department and some of the events that happen in downtown Heggers Town. So as well as Juneteenth, which we've been doing the past couple of years. It has been my pleasure to work for the county and the city as well to help move the children forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a picture. I'm like, I'll take another picture, Mr. Jeff.
Okay, good smile. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up, we have citizen comments, and we have Mr. Devin Fleming, and, um...
No, no, no.
Wrong one.
Oh, sorry, is that the public hearing, I'm sorry. Um, is this Ms. Stephanie Pulley?
Phillips.
Phillips. Oh, it's Ms. Stephanie. Ms. Stephanie, please stand in front, you have three minutes, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, City Councilon attendees, Stephanie Phillips, address on file, Hagerstown, Maryland. Reintroduce myself also as Mission Bay oh seven oh four one nine six six, AKA Duty to Act. Thank you all for your service to the community and to those who have reached out and shown concern and increased security. I'm grateful to be alive and that mission goals are still progressing. Mine are complete. This will be my last public address for a while unless you'd like a closed-door session. Rest assured, there are large coalition of international amphibious engineers specially trained to start addressing dam concerns, starting in Pennsylvania once a peace treaty is signed, calling for a ten-year moratorium on war so that all countries can rebuild infrastructure. These specialized ambassadors will then travel worldwide doing the same based on risk assessment priority. Another not well-known is cybercrime, another not well-known goal. As it relates to exchange and divulging of personal information which could be compromised, such as exchanged driver's licenses in collisions, should not be photographed which could be photoshopped recreating IDs. State Farm Insurance is looking into revising this to protect clients' privacy. In addition, they're considering a clear pocket gift bag to place over vehicle headrests that customers who choose could list medical status information, advance directives in case of death or incapacitation to support EMS services. Lastly, a wise person taught me, it's not the incident so much as how you and others respond. I'm slow to react. As a retiree, in my three geographies, I'm not a transient. I'm attending city council and county commission meetings. I was inspired by how mayor responded to an out-of-town visitor who was robbed, lost all identification and financial resources, working on behalf of all of the community and helping the individual in front of them. I'm not good at asking for help. I've had many challenges and setbacks. At sixty years old, head-to-toe injury affecting multiple body systems is hard. I'm concerned for the elder eighty-year-old driver involved. The hospital ER staff and I prayed for her. I was told she got no immediate care and a few things could have gone better for me. This is not really your jurisdiction. Not long ago, I cohabitated with an eighty-year-old female who had only one living brother, her age, living in Baltimore. Healthcare systems are really strained and it's gonna get more challenging in the future. I really hope this driver is okay. I'm not sure the long-term implications for me, but I'm grateful for the progress so far. And, um, any offer of help would be considered and appreciated. Or suggestions, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Stephanie. Next we have Mr. Harris, and is it Yahya? Don't wanna mess up your name, I'm sorry. Can you state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes?
That's right, it's Yahya.
Say that again?
I said it's Yahya.
Yahya.
Council members, Mayor Martinez, Harris Yahya, at a hundred Academy Drive. I'm a senior at Mercyberry Academy up in Franklin County, PA. And although I'm not a resident at Hagerstown, in my past four years at the academy, I've spent a lot of time in Hagerstown for various school-related activities, athletic events, and whatnot. So I'm very familiar with the city. And for my senior capstone project, I'm looking at what makes a city attractive and how walkability plays a key aspect in that. And I've been specifically looking at parking mandates and parking minimums and how they shape the urban fabric of cities and specifically of our downtown. And how those mandates have caused many American cities to overbuild a colossal supply of parking. I mean, in America, approximately for every car, there's three parking spaces. So that adds up to about thirty, the national supply of parking, thirty-three percent of it is at capacity at any given time. So, that means like roughly most American cities are made up one-third of parking. But the issue with that is that when these parking mandates were implemented, a lot of American cities downtown were carved up simply because of the fact that they had to devote a lot of land to parking for the minimums. But the downtown of a lot of American cities, that's where the most real estate value is. That's some of those valuable property in those cities. And we can see the effect of these minimums in Hagerstown, too. If you look at a satellite view of the city from above, outside the center of town square, the core downtown area is littered with parking lots, many of which are barely at fifty percent capacity even during peak hours. And I note that, back in two thousand twelve, a parking study of sorts was done. And results showed that even at peak times, only forty-eight percent of the downtown parking was occupied. But I believe that where excessive parking mandates hurt the most is not only the walkability of downtown, but the developers and average citizens looking to open a local business or a bigger developer looking to create affordable housing. Those parking mandates create an extra price tag that puts them out of reach. If they're lowered, it can incentivize more businesses to be open, housing to be built, and people to move in, which will stimulate the local economy. And right now, as a nation, we're living in an ongoing housing crisis, yet a lot of cities still build more parking lots and build more parking structures, pretty much parking structures for cars, housing for cars, instead of housing for humans. Does the council or the city planning commission plan to look at parking mandates for possible reform? Or do they plan to do another parking study?
That's it?
Yeah.
Thank you. And next, we have, we have a public hearing, Annexations of Heaven Heights Homes LLC.
Joanna, if you would raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Joanna Wu, Monis Franklin, Hagerstown, Maryland. So I'll be presenting the annexation A two thousand twenty-three oh four at Southern Boulevard for Heaven's Heights Homes LLC. A little bit about the property, it is in tax night forty-nine, grid twenty-three, parcel twelve oh seven. The property is on the west side of Southern Boulevard and north of East Oak Ridge Drive. It is contiguous to the city and within the medium-range growth area. It totals around twelve acres. Currently is zoned in the county as RS residential suburban. And the proposed city zoning is Armad residential moderate density, both which allow for single and two-family homes. The adjacent city zoning is RH or residential high-density. And the adjacent county zoning is RS with a PUD overlay. It is also the MRGA, the county's urban growth area, and state's priority funding area. A little bit about the annexation plan, water and wastewater will be served by the city upon development. The annexation does not involve taking ownership of the roads. Public safety services will be by city police, city fire, Meredith's, and community rescue service. Electric service is provided by Potomac Edison. And the planning commission reviewed the zoning requests and the annexation plan and recommended positively. To comply with state law, two public notices were published advertising this hearing. And signs were also posted near the property to notify adjacent owners. The plan and resolution were also sent to the county, tri-county council, and Maryland Department of Planning at least thirty days prior to this hearing. On February twenty-eighth, the annexation resolution was introduced and the plan was adopted. Today, we're having this hearing, and in May, on May twenty-first, we'll have a follow-up discussion. And if all runs smoothly, the approval of the resolution will be on May twenty-eighth. And at this time, I would like to enter into the record the certificate of advertisement and the file by reference for A two thousand twenty-three oh four. And that's all I have, thank you.
We do have two people signed up for a public comment, I mean, for a public hearing. Mr. Devin Fleming, would you please come up and state your name and address? Did you sign up for a public?
A public hearing?
Yeah, for testimony at a public hearing, did you mean to do citizen comments?
I think he just signed in.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for signing in. He was about to be on the spot. And so, I think this is, is this Jake, or Jake, is it, it looks like a, or Sarah, is it Sarah? Okay, I'm sorry, I can barely, I can barely read it, Ms. Sarah, your last name. Could you please come up to the front, you went to speak on, is this for, are you here for the public hearing? Or did you want to do citizen comments?
Well, I have some questions, please, about the hearing.
Okay. Okay, yes, ma'am. So would you please state your first and last name and then your address for the record? And she need, city clerk, to swear you in.
So I'm gonna provide the oath to you, and then, so if you just raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statement made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And then would you please state your name and address for the record?
Sarah Haver. My home address is one three nine Sunflower Drive, Hagerstown, Maryland, two one seven four zero. I have a list of ten questions. I'm president of the Board of Directors of South Point Homeowners Association. That's why I'm the spokesperson. I have a list of questions here that the board has concerns. I believe there were some residents that had expressed concerns concerning the Heaven's Heights Homes. And we wanted to know first, I'm just gonna read each question, if that's okay. Is Heaven Heights Homes a California-based company? Or is, and who is it affiliated with?
We can get answers to these questions for you.
Okay.
If you want to go ahead and read the questions?
Okay.
And then, if we can get a copy of those questions, we can, we can respond to you.
Okay. The second question is, does Heaven Heights Homes have a particular religious connection?
Okay.
The third question is, there is high ground on the western border of the proposed development next to the South Point Retainment Ponds. When cut away, this would create a sheer wall, how will this be retained? The wall. From where are utilities for this development to be extended? Sewer, electric power, water, fire suppression, fire plugs, gas, et cetera? And is this gonna tax South Point's utilities? What is the plan for highway access? Where are the access points? Do the access roads from Heaven's Heights connect to Southern Boulevard? How will you handle the stormwater runoff from the large swale in South Point? Where are the impoundment, where are the impoundment ponds for stormwater runoff in Heaven Heights? Is this a low-income or section eight housing complex? Is this housing intended for illegal immigrants? What are the plans for increased student load on the existing schools? And are you aware that South Point, there's a tree line, it's a buffer zone that was created between the county and South Point when South Point was developed? Okay, the swale, the large swale that I'm talking about has a county right-of-way, but it's owned by South Point Homeowners Association. And the last one is, why move this tract of land to the city? Why not let it stay in the county?
Can we, can you either leave us those questions, or?
I can run a copy.
Well, we can run a copy, either way.
Thank you, Ms. Haver.
I can try to tackle some of those questions now. Some we would not have answers to at this point. This is a proposal to annex, it's not a proposal to, do I need to be sworn in, Donna?
Yes, you do.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statement made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Kathy Marr, Director of Planning and Code Administration, and my offices are here in this very building. So I'll start with the last question first. Why annex, why not stay out in the county? Since two thousand and two, the city of Hagerstown has set an annexation policy that says if you want to request city water service, you have to annex if you're on our borders. If you're not on our borders, then you have to provide a pre-annexation agreement. And that agreement is that if we ever get out to you, you would annex as a condition of having received water for your development plan. And so this is right on our borders, it borders on Ravenwood, which is in the city. So this person came to us asking to annex because they want to develop on city water. So that's why this is happening now. And then in terms of a California-based company, I have no idea. A religious connection, that is not a question we would ever ask or expect to be provided to us. All the questions regarding stormwater management, that would be figured out when someone comes forward with a development plan, we wouldn't have that information right now. And also where the utilities would come from, that would also be part of. It's gonna be city water and wastewater, where they connect to possible areas. And so I don't know, we would figure that all out during the development process, which would happen after the land came into the city. We know that this developer's interest is in two-family dwellings. And the county zoning allows for single-family and two-family. The city zoning being requested is also a single-family, two-family. You couldn't do anything more dense than that with this type of zoning. And so that's what they have been thinking about, but it would be, if this person ended up selling the property, it would be whatever you could do with our zoning, which is a single-family or two-family, which is comparable to the county's current residential suburban. Ours is gonna be residential moderate in the city, but the same kind of housing units. I don't know these situations about a buffer between South Point and the county. I would imagine the buffer is probably on the South Point property, not on this property, because it would have been part of your development. And then, I think that's it right now, but we can keep you posted. I'll get your information from Donna, so as this keeps moving forward, if you want to be kept in the loop whenever they come forward with a development plan.
And if we could get answers to her questions so she can relay those back to to the homeowners association during a meeting. And then we can have that provided to the council on May twenty-first when we have the work session.
Right.
Is that good?
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions for staff.
For staff?
I have a couple of questions for you. Either one of you, I'm sure, are completely able to answer. So, the... So the, the plan summary references a fifty-plus-one. And I think it says fifty-two-family and one-single-family? Did I read that wrong? I'm sorry, thirty, yeah. So if there's no development plan that has been submitted even conceptually?
We've seen a concept. It's not part of the annexation, but we've seen it. Because we were advising them whether that would work with our zoning or not.
Okay. So that gets me to my second question. And maybe I'll use this, South Point is probably a good example to use. I came on to this body probably just after South Point was approved and under construction. It didn't exist at that time, twenty, a couple of years ago, right? And it gets me to my question about roads and conceptual planning. Because if I'd have been on this body at that time, number one, I would've required that property to annex into the city, as it rightly should've done. And two, I would've required that development to connect to the city streets that dump out onto Wilson Boulevard, so that hundreds of cars don't have to overload the intersections at South Potomac, at both Oak Ridge Drive and at Wilson Boulevard every day, right? People would be able to go through like grid systems are supposed to be designed and perpetuated over time. But that didn't happen, but it does beg the question of what happens with this property in terms of connectivity? Because I see this, and I can't read it on the plan, I apologize. Is that a right-of-way, or is that the swale that's being referred to? About where the arrow is pointing on that particular map. There's a, it looks like there's a property dash line here. And I guess my basic question is?
It would connect to Southern Boulevard. There is no connection point for South Point or for Ravenwood.
So the entirety of the development will have one ingress and one egress? And there's no opportunity for development of this property to have any other ingress or egress to or from it?
Right, because of the way the other properties have developed.
Okay.
And it's below the number that we require a second access point.
I also saw in your report the impact that it'll have to the feeder school systems. It looks like elementary is supposed to be addressed by the county at some point, with, with building another elementary school at some point. But it will place South High even further over capacity than it already is. And I'd just be curious, you know, if that same question was raised and answered and addressed with the huge residential development that's going on the other side of Funkstown, outside of the city. And so I just, you know, I look at those and go, okay, you know, what is the consistency of addressing that particular subject matter? Because in the report, it just says that you have conferred with Washington County Public Schools. I'm just wondering what, you know what I mean, what that response process is.
They comment on everything that we look at, the city residential-wise, but there is nothing in a county school CIP to address middle school or high school.
I just scratch my head and wonder how the other one then, you know, was able to get started, because it was clearly over capacity as well at that time, when that development happening outside of the city proceeded, without question. So I think the road was my biggest issue.
There's no one else signed up for a public hearing? Is there anyone else that would like to speak? For the public hearing? All right, you gotta come up and be sworn in.
Yes.
State your name and address for the record after she's raised her hand.
Okay.
So if you raise your right hand, please, do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name and address for the record.
Devon Fleming, eleven four two eight Isaac Court, Hagerstown, Maryland. Just curiosity, I was just, I noticed here, when it comes to the, like, the job programs that you all have here, I asked a few at the consortium pertaining to that. And they, not one time did they say, oh, Hagerstown has an internship or a job program for the city of Hagerstown. Do you all have a program here in Hagerstown?
So that would be public comment? I don't think that has to do with the public hearing, right? Correct?
Correct, yes.
And so, do you wanna answer?
We work with the school system, whether it be Washington County Public Schools, HCC, or USMH. When they have interns that are available and want to look into this, we do, we have accepted interns in the past, yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for public comment? Because I didn't ask that after public comments, and now I'm flipping that. All right, no, you're good. All right. The record will stay open for ten days on the public hearing. Donna? I mean, it's been one of them days, right? Minutes, an approval of the minutes?
Madam Mayor, hereby move for the approval of minutes as presented for the mayor and council meetings held on March fifth, twenty twenty-four, March twelfth, twenty twenty-four, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the consent agenda, I'm just gonna read each one. For fire, Mercedes Fire hose purchase, and that's with our Public Safety Group. And then for information technology, MU, Munis Utility Billing API Toolkit, that's Tyler Technologies. And then Office three sixty-five Annual License Renewal, V Tech Solutions. And then for police, two Pharaoh Laser Scanners, Pharaoh Technologies, Inc. And a red light camera changes, charges, American Traffic Solutions. And for public works, ice rate chiller repairs, that's Kelly HVAC. Win K E V E M V Credit Card Readers, Hub City Parking Technology USA, Inc. Dumpster Service in the parks, golf course, and pool, Republic Services, Inc. And then for wastewater engineering service, Pump Station thirty-three, Beckett Horn. And then truck, five twenty-six, service body Keystone Ford.
Madam Mayor, could I please request item C two to be voted on separately?
You made the motion to approve consent agenda with the exception of that one, and then it moves to new business, the last item, and becomes a separate motion? If that's the way you wish to move on that, on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the item as identified by Councilmember Farini to be moved to the end of the agenda for a separate vote.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I understand everything is correct?
Correct.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Approval of an ordinance, amending sections of Chapter sixty-four Building Construction, Article three, Property Maintenance Standards.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and council approve the, and ordinance to amend the code of the city of Hagerstown, Chapter sixty-four, Article three, by adding or amending sections to Chapter sixty-four Building Construction, Article three, Property Maintenance Standards, which provides definitions, requirements for floor conditions, entry doors, infestation, fire safety, backflow prevention, smoke, carbon monoxide alarm requirements, and occupant health, well-being, and safety. With this ordinance, the code provisions shall become effective immediately upon the effective date of this enacting ordinance.
Is there no second?
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approve of an ordinance, Chapter two thirty, Transient Housing, to enhance and support our neighborhoods.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and city council to approve an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Hagerstown, Chapter two thirty, Transient Housing, which will, one, amend the definition of transient visitor, and, two, require the transient housing license to be displayed in the lobby or other prominent public place on the premises.
Second.
Discussion?
Madam Mayor, just a comment again, to encourage that we retitle these, this section, these relevant sections to trans, take away the word transient, to more aptly identify these sections as what they are, which is hotels, motels, and other accommodations. So the public understands what the code is about. Thank you.
I thought we discussed that and agreed to change the verbiage in the last motion.
If the direction was not provided to staff, and it takes more than changing the title, the entire ordinance would have to go through to read and find it.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I thought that the direction was for us to look for a term that was better suited. In other words, we would proceed with this, but we're going to look for a term that's better suited than,
As long as, right.
than what we're using. But what we're using is what's defined.
Correct.
Until we come up with something better.
Is it on, are we scheduled to look at that, or?
Yeah, we can, yeah, but we weren't. We will do that.
Good. Perfect. Second.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve of an ordinance, update of Chapter two zero four, I don't know where I am. Signs and reenacting Chapter two zero four Signs Off Premises Billboards.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and city council approve an ordinance to amend the city code by repealing Chapter two oh four Signs and reenacting Chapter two oh four Signs Off Premises and Billboards. The reenacted chapter is a comprehensive update of the chapter originally adopted in nineteen ninety-nine. The purpose of the update is to reasonably accommodate off-premises advertising signs while also establishing minimum standards intended to further traffic safety, maintain and enhance the aesthetic environment of the city, and minimize possible adverse effects of signs on nearby public and private property.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve of an ordinance, adoption of revised Drug-Free School Zone map and amending Chapter twenty-five of the city code.
Madam Mayor, hereby move for the approval of ordinance to revise the Drug-Free School Zone map, to add the Hagerstown Children's School, and remove other schools that no longer exist, and to amend Chapter twenty-five of the city code.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve of annexation plan A dash two zero two four dash zero three, forty-five West Oak Ridge Drive.
Madam Mayor, go ahead.
Go ahead. Madam Mayor, I have a move for the mayor and council approve an annexation plan for annexation case number A dash two zero two four dash zero three, forty-five West Oak Ridge Drive, Lot two of the JDA annexation agreement. The portion of property to be annexed is approximately fifty-two acres in size and is intended to be added to and made part of the adjacent municipal lands with I dash MU zoning.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Introduction of Annexation Resolution A dash two zero two four dash zero three, forty-five West Oak Ridge Drive.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and council introduce an annexation resolution for annexation case number A dash two zero two four dash zero three, forty-five West Oak Ridge Drive, Lot two of the JDA annexation agreement. The portion of the property to be annexed is approximately fifty-two acres in size and is intended to be added to and made part of the adjacent municipal lands with I dash MU zoning. The resolution package includes the annexation plan, zoning exhibit, and pre-annexation agreement.
Second.
Discussion?
Just a quick comment. I just wanted to say, I know this has been a fairly long and at times complicated process. I wanted to thank staff for working with mayor and council through this. I also wanted to thank Johnson Development Associates, Inc., for recognizing that process with the city and finding reasonable compromise where we could to work through this to proceed with annexation and development of this property as they have done.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve of Community Health and Safety Works Grant of Applications?
Madam Mayor, I hereby move to authorize staff to submit applications for one hundred thousand dollars each under the Community Health and Safety Works Grant categories of community placemaking and cameras, lighting, and related safety services. Funding will be used for the enhancement of the Market Walk property between West Franklin Street and Weller's Alley. No match is required for this grant program.
Second. Yours, please.
Discussion?
Just a comment, just to staff for also stand the course with our goals. Our survey that we did in the beginning of this term identified that lighting was an issue. And I thank staff for identifying a grant that we can use, possibly a hundred thousand to identify that. Thank you.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Engineering and Capital Projects Program Bay Restoration Fund Grant Application for Enhanced Nutrient Removal Operation Maintenance.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and city council approval of the Bay Restoration Fund Grant Application for engineering and capital projects for enhanced nutrient removal operation and maintenance. Funding will be used for enhanced nutrient removal improvements projects identified in fiscal year twenty-five CIP and operating budget to help ensure compliance with the city's NPDES nutrient load requirements for nitrogen and phosphorus.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve of a temporary overfill, one full-time position for Support Services Department?
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council to approve the temporary overfill of a full-time position, one Support Services Specialist. This position is necessary to ensure continued customer support levels, assist during transition of relocating offices, and address workload changes.
Second.
Discussion?
I'm just really glad that we're doing this. I'm sure that everyone downstairs is glad too.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City Administrator?
There you go, one more.
Oh.
Two more. Two more.
The one that we just moved.
Oh. So approval of public art across Maryland grant, can you tell them where you go?
Madam Mayor, I hereby move to accept a public art across Maryland grant from Maryland State Arts Council in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, which will be used to design, fabricate, and install the Train of Thought artwork near the Claire Barton Memorial. Additional funds for the project will be appropriated in the fiscal year twenty-five Public Art CIP.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So red light camera charges, American Traffic Solutions, Ramessa, Arizona. Have a motion for approval? Is that what?
You guys motion for approval? Yep.
Just for that one individual item, on number two, under police?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. City Administrator?
A couple of things, Mayor. Though it's been a long day for everybody, but I appreciate the discussion that we had. That was all productive. And gave us some work to do, and we'll get back to everybody next week, and hopefully we can get those questions answered. I want to thank Mr. Jeff. I still have the books that we got through his program when my kids were born, thirty-five and thirty years ago. And we, and I won't say- and thirty years ago, and we, and not, I won't say I still read them to them, but one of them is Good Night Moon, and we still have that, and my granddaughter loves that book. So thank you to Mr. Jeff. Also, congratulations to Aaron Brooks on being what may be Hagerstown's first Olympian, I think. But I want to make sure everyone understands that as soon as we can get him available, whether it be into a meeting like this, or we bring him to University Plaza, we're going to celebrate him. I'm not sure what his time is going to look like up to the Olympics, but, but we will get him here, without a doubt. Friday night is Thunder in the Square, starts at five o'clock. Also, our decade series premieres with the nineteen sixties. The Cruisers are in University Plaza, five thirty to eight. Tended the Commission on Aging Event Saturday night. Appreciate being able to participate in that event. NLC One Hundred Cities Roadshow was a huge success. Appreciate all of you participating in that one, and they were very thrilled with, with what they saw here in Hagerstown. I think we'll, we'll hear more from NLC in the future. The NV Tenth Ending Event was awesome, also at South High, and thanks to the boxcars, some of the players hanging around and playing with the kids. I know it made a lot of kids nights to be able to meet with them. And the boxcars open up on May fourth. We have been meeting with them on a weekly basis. We'll skip this week, but we'll meet with them again before opening day, before soft opening day on May fourth, just to make sure that we are all on the same page on what we can expect will, will happen there. It's going to be a smaller attendance starting out. May seventeenth is the big opening, where you can expect thirty-five hundred, four thousand people to be there, and hopefully we'll get all the kinks worked out and make that a smooth transition there. There is a lot to come, not only from the boxcars, but also events coming to that stadium. And it's a work in progress, and we know not everybody's going to be happy with, with what they, what they experience there, whether it be, you know, whatever that might be, but it's a work in progress, and we're going to do our best to make sure that everything goes well. And also, goodbye to Fairgrounds. That thing gets, it's, it's amazing the progress they're making over at, over on Cannon Avenue. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Asher?
I have nothing to say.
Thank you. Councilman Perrini?
Madam Mayor, since our last regular session, I've had some opportunities to be out and about. First of all, attended on the Hagerstown lobbying firm legislative issue conference calls, as well as the MML Legislative Committee Zoom calls. And with that, I just want to make a comment that our city administrator, of course, is the chair of the MML Legislative Committee and continues to receive incredibly high accolades for his good work there. On March twenty-eighth, attended the Home Builders Association Monthly Meeting, and the April fourth, attended the Home Builders Association Land Use Council Meeting, where the county had their staff there to talk about permit issues. To say it was contentious was, would be an understatement. April eighth, attended Sunny Die in Annapolis. On April eleventh, attended Abyssive Event right in downtown Hagerstown. Thirteenth, attended an event of political leaders in Western Maryland. On April sixteenth, attended, as we all did, the National League of Cities One Hundred City Roadshow, which honored Hagerstown. And on the seventeenth of April, attended the Washington County Teacher of the Year Ceremony representing the council, and was pleased to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Renette?
Just a few things, Mayor. Over this past weekend, I participated in Hagerstown Parks and Recs one hundred miler final walk, along with Councilman Schindler, and shout out to Ryan Smetzer for leading the way through City Park. This was the first time in four years that we got, we actually hit a little bit over one mile. Last year, we went way over. We always swing it. So shout out to him and Amy Riley and her crew, and all the vendors that participate. That's one of my favorite events of the year, and the shirts were much better this year. So whoever we use, who's my kid. And also attended Arbor Day slash Earth Day activities at Hager House, along with Councilman Schindler and Councilmember McIntyre, and Hagerstown Youth Council was there. Shout out to that team and the board members that showed up. And Councilman Schindler and his son and I planted a tree. So in like ten years, we're going to come back and see if our trees, if we did it right, see if the tree's growing. And speaking of Earth Day, I haven't heard anything about another cleanup day. Do we have one scheduled? And if not, can we get that on the books?
I don't know. We can do it.
Yeah, it's getting nice out.
Stickover area?
It is getting nice.
Sorry?
Where?
Downtown.
Downtown?
Downtown cleanup day.
Cleanup day, get some volunteers, and use Brittany's great PR skills to advertise when we're going to have it. And two more things. Staff, thank you for your patience. This body changes every four years, and y'all continue to show up and educate us, and I'm just so thankful that you are willing to listen and, and just collaborate, and it does, it doesn't go unnoticed. And one more. My daughter, Shyla, will be thirteen years old on Saturday. When we started, she was nine years old. So huge difference, but I have, I'll have a teenager, so thoughts and prayers, please. And happy birthday, Shyla.
She's off the clock. That's what my daughter said. When she get off the twelve, you're thirteen, you're off the clock.
Oh. Yeah. No.
I'll, I'll call her and tell her, you're off the clock. Councilwoman Schindler?
I'll try to keep it brief, even though it's been a long meeting, but I did have a couple of things. I wanted to echo Councilmember Renette's sentiments. Saturday was fantastic, both the Parks and Recs Department and the Youth Council in their respective events, and I can't wait to come check back on that tree in a few years and see how it's going. I wanted to congratulate the Horizon Goodwill and the Hagerstown Housing Authority on their new corner store there at the Towers. It's a win for food insecurity here in the city, and I'm really happy to see it. It's well needed. I also wanted to shout out to Mr. Jeff. I remember as a, a young boy, my parents took us to Storytime at the old Washington County Library with Mr. Jeff. So it's a, it's a well-deserved retirement for him. It's very cool. And I also wish my son Happy Adoption Day tomorrow, so.
Nice. Wow. Nice. Yay.
Love that.
It's always. Councilwoman McIntyre?
It's always, you know, when everyone else says all the things, I just want to also echo, especially the National League of Cities tour. It was really, you know, if, I challenge everyone that's listening to this to do that same tour, to go to the fieldhouse first, walk near Barbara Ingram. We got lucky enough to be like a flash mobs, that was really fun. Walk back and, you know, see the, the parking deck, which was just amazing to me, because that was the first time I'd gone back there. And, you know, then to the, the stadium project. It's just like, it's really difficult to not be excited about what's happening. I mean, we have tough conversations up here, they are lengthy, and sometimes they are not very fun, no offense, Eric, but there is a lot of great, great things going on, and you have to really just sit behind your computer and comment on Facebook and Herald Mail. Hi, Tamela. If, you know, in order to not know what's going on. So I encourage you. I also think the NV event was really awesome. Mr. Tim Morrow, if they don't write a documentary about him one day, he is just a tremendous asset to this community and for all things anti-violence and youth, and he is just a, just one heck of a guy. I would like to thank Mr. Fleming for sharing Lyric with me for the past hour or two. She has voted yes for the temporary overfill of support and accepted the public art. She would also like to learn how to spell her middle name. She does not know. So that is your challenge, otherwise.
Ms. Lyric, would you like to say anything?
Oh, yeah, you want to say anything, Lyric?
You have any closing comments?
Tell your dad. Tell your dad something. No?
No?
She does like butterscotch candies also, only the beginning. She doesn't like the end of it. Learned a lot up here. Learned a lot.
Speaking of which, she stole Lyric for me. Lyric was supposed to be my assistant. She likes it down there better. We're happy to have Lyric with us. I think that any way that we can expose children to, you know, what we do, I think that it's, it, it will go a long way. And Lyric, I hope this is something you'll remember for a very long time, especially hearing Councilmember Asher say that he sat in a, a meeting all day about playground safety while we were back there eating sandwiches. So just remember that. I want to say thank you to National League of Cities for choosing us, One Hundred Cities for one hundred years. It was amazing. I think that being born and raised here, doing a lot of service work here, sometimes I feel like we go unnoticed, just as, you know, this small municipality in the valley that we go unnoticed, and it just felt good to have someone come and kind of celebrate with us the growth that's happening. Barbara Ingram, the flash mob, the Addams Family was amazing. Thank you for that. I think that that's the thing that will set us apart from all the other tours. So thank you to staff that coordinated, and then all of the folks that met us along the way to kind of, you know, show a big showing up for Hagerstown. Thank you. I also want to say, I was not here. This is my first meeting back. I was out in Hagerstown, Indiana, and so you looked very good on camera, and I actually watched a council meeting for the first time, and I have to tell you, it is hilarious. It is, because if you sit in this room for all this time, and then all of a sudden you watch it, it's kind of like I kind of knew the body language and all of that. So just really, you guys held it down, and thank you. I want to say about Hagerstown, Indiana, we have to have them back during this administration. They came last year, and we were on our way to Maryland Municipal League, to Ocean City. We had, the hospitality was amazing. I mean, they, they had a nighttime parade, they shouted us out, they hung our flag at their town hall. I mean, it was just amazing. I spoke at their junior and their senior high school, and they're already requesting like more, more restorative practices, more, you know, peace circle type stuff. So just an amazing connection, and I hope that the next elected body keeps up with it and really tightens this, this relationship up. I want to say congratulations to Mr. Jeff. Mr. Jeff spent forty-two years. I remember Mr. Jeff at the old library, too. I remember Mr. Jeff as a kid, and I remember taking my kids to sit in front of Mr. Jeff. And so my prayer is that Mr. Jeff retires and finds another job. Everybody that I talk to that retires finds another job. I want to say thank you to Deputy Secretary Antonia Reason of Juvenile Services. She and two of her staff members spent some time with me today, and then we went to lunch right after, and we talked about all things juvenile, all things of how to work together with the state and with the city, a municipality, and with juvenile around all things, juvenile violence, juvenile reentry, foster care reentry, all of those things. And so I just thank them for making a trip from Baltimore and spending some time with me. And I want to say thank you to Mr. Chris Glenn, The Blueprint is his boxing name. He will be fighting May eighteenth, Saturday, May eighteenth, indeed, in Washington DC, and he will be hailing from Hagerstown, because he trains at Police Athletic League. He actually gave me two floor seat tickets to the actual boxing match. I just want to say thank you. Thank you for even saying I'm from Hagerstown. I think that that's amazing. And then I opened up a really cool letter today from Mr. Steven and Lori Hager, who are descendants of Captain Jonathan Hager, and they included pictures, and they sent me a very, very nice T-shirt, and it was just really, really, really cool. And so I have some books that were related to Jonathan Hager. I am very thankful to be a part of this administration, and I look forward to all of the great things to come, and with that, we are adjourned. Lyric, we're.